Join with other men and women who work together to make this a sustainable economy year-round. Welcome to Belmont Cape Cod.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight is Monday, September the 24th. If you could all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up this evening is interview for the Capitol Advisory Committee. As a reminder to the Board, we have two members of the Board, two members of the Finance Committee, and I.e. the Finance Director and/or the Town Manager or his designee, that would be either him, either whoever he deems fit. So we have two openings that we're interviewing for this evening. Of course, this committee is only designed to help us through the process of finding the means and methods to fund our capital stabilization plan, capital stabilization account. First up for interview this evening is Dan Shera. Tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the Capitol Advisory Committee.
My name is Dan Shera. I'm in Precinct 6. I've been a Town Board Meeting member. I'm not quite sure how long. I put something on my application, but I found out that it's wrong. I've been on there a little bit longer than what it says there. I think for the last 10 or 15 years, I've been fairly active in trying to slow down some of our spending in town, what's happening. I have been predicting that the situation that we're getting ourselves into now was going to happen, and it has. And we are starting to realize that we haven't been taking care of our properties we own, our roads, our water systems, our town in general, our beaches, our harbors, and we've got to get going, or we're going to lose a lot. I want my children to live in Belmont. I really like it here. I want my grandchildren to live in Belmont. I want people to be able to afford to live in Belmont and enjoy everything that I've enjoyed in the last 75 years. And I don't think the way things are going now, that will be possible unless we sort of find a way to keep our infrastructure the way it should be. Now, we started a long time ago, when I started here, we had this money tree. And when you have a money tree like this, it was blooming, it had buds in it, it looked gorgeous, and we've been picking away at it year after year. And now, you see it, you probably would throw it away. But with a little fertilizer and a little help, you come back to me next spring, this is going to be in good shape again. And I think we can do that with our economy. It is not going to be an easy job. It is not. It's going to be a painful job. There's a lot of unpleasant things that'll probably have to be done. We've got to find what the money. The easy way to be, say, oh, let's have an override. It's not, it was tried, it's not going to work. Overrides in this town, I believe, are a thing of the past for a long time until we prove ourselves. I think Mr. Murphy the other night made a very good idea when he said, okay, let's take the other, the 50% of the sales tax, blue tax, and make it permanent. And I understand it wouldn't pass. I think that shows that the selectmen really don't, really don't, well, doesn't, don't think this is important, the capital plan. You've got to say, this is really important. You've got to fight for it, and you've got to put all your strength behind it, or you're not going to get it. You're not going to get the cash. And I think I've got ideas. I think I've got, they're, none of them are going to give you $3 million. I think we can get a good portion of it easily, really without hurting too many people, and that's why I'd like to be on the committee. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman.
Open up the questions. Go ahead.
I believe that the capital fund is an important one, but it's going to have to be balanced with the operating budget a little bit. Could you talk a little about your experience either municipal or corporate with operating budgets?
About our operating budget?
Your personal experience in your past in dealing with budgets, either corporate or municipal?
Well, the main thing is you can't spend more than you're bringing in. That's, that's what basically, the rule I learned in business school. But you, and you, it says in our warrant book, the first thing is, there's a lot of things everybody needs, I mean wants, but very few of them you really need. And I think we've got to start living by that. You've got to, we've got to look at everything and say, do we actually really need this before we spend our, our money? We also have to start looking at what future expenses, whatever this, this is. I mean, we have an absolutely gorgeous library. It's a wonderful job, but did we really need three meeting rooms? And I will bet you anything you want, that those three meeting rooms were never all used in the same day. We've got to look at things much more closely, but that's not going to be done in this term of this whole committee. It's only suggestions.
I guess my question was, what experience have you had in the past, in your past, in working with budgets, either municipal or corporate?
Well, I have worked with the Finance Committee. I was on the Finance Committee in town. I have done my own finance of my own business, and that's would be mine.
Thank you.
Okay, David?
Thank you, Mr. Shera, for your application and your willingness to serve. Can you, if you were on the committee already, can you give me like one idea that you would bring forward that would assist us with our budget issues?
Well, I would take the Water Department and make all its income, let them keep it, you know. I can't think of the term.
Enterprise funds?
Enterprise. Thank you very much. I've been trying to think of that all afternoon, and I couldn't come up with it. An enterprise front of the Water Department. We've got pipes all over town that are old. We've got to build it up, and that's one thing that we want.
A couple, yeah, a couple of years ago, the DPW had, I think, approached a selectman who had given us paperwork showing that they were very short on, on money, that they were losing money in the Water Department. However, Gary Anderson took the numbers and did his own study and said the money's actually being lost at the wastewater plant, basically because they don't have a large enough customer base to bring in revenue. And would you take the wastewater money as well?
I think, I am not an expert on that. I don't know. And I, I feel that would be something that could possibly be done, and I, that's outside my range.
Okay. You, you are in favor of enterprise funds, though?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You know, as a follow-on to that question, though, I don't know if you're aware of it, but the, the Board has looked at that as an option, but it's a down-the-road option because there's a, there's a lot of prerequisites, if you will, that have to be done before we get there. So is there something you think we could do in six months' time as opposed to something that may take a few years?
Well, you want something that I'll be, I'll be booed out of the room for, but I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and say it. In our waste management picture, which we are going to be talking about later tonight, we have an $800,000 plus, over 3.5% override paying for that right now. Let's talk our town meeting into taking that override, or money out of the budget and putting it in and re-putting it in, not costing a taxpayer a penny, into capital improvement or a budget, and pay for our trash or pickup with pay-as-you-thrown completely.
Okay. Well, that's going to be our discussion in a few minutes, so.
I mean, I'll, the Waste Management Committee has not heard about that suggestion, and I'm sure, knowing, being on the committee, they won't like it, but it is a way of getting some, some money without taxing it, increasing taxes, and having people pay for what they discard.
Okay. Well, I, I think, Dan, that you may have misunderstood that three-year, it wasn't a three-year override, it was a three-year capital exclusion for DPW for very specific maintenance costs. And when we, or are you thinking of something?
I was thinking of what Peter Boyer was writing articles about.
Oh, what he was proposing.
Or his 3%, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I know they, they, yes, I understand.
Okay. Well, my question would be, how, what value do you place on a five-year capital plan? And if you do place value in it, how strongly would you support it each year as the previous year's priorities rise to the next level? What, how strong would you be in maintaining those priorities each year as, as they emerge to the top of the heap?
If you make a five-year capital plan, I think that has to be at the very top of everything that you spend. I think that has to be made su, and solid, because we can't let our stuff fall down. We can't fix it. It's going to cost us a fortune.
So, so in other words, what you're saying is, we have a five-year capital plan, then each year, as each of those priorities rise to the, to the level, to the top level for spending, that you would keep them there, and if there were other urgent issues that might arise, you'd have to look for some other funding source?
That's right.
To, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Yes, that is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I think that would be more, I, I think we've gone too far the other direction, and I think we've got to start going towards the capital improvements now.
All right. I just have one question that I want to follow up on, when you and Brent were speaking of, and that's fees versus taxes. Tell me what the difference is.
Fees and taxes are basically the same. The only thing that's different about fees and taxes is, in most cases, the people that are paying a fee, they're doing it for something that the other person doesn't want to do. For instance, you're mooring fee. A mooring fee is a tax in this town, but if you want to own a boat, that's one of the things that you're going to, to have to pay. If you want to play golf, you're going to have to pay for that.
My next question, though, would be a follow-up on that. Wouldn't it be circumventing the democratic process by this Board imposing a fee on pay-as-you-thrown and take the money we have currently budgeted for waste disposal and move it over to somewhere else?
Well, we couldn't move it over. The taxpayers would have to, have to vote that themselves. I don't think we, you can move a, a, an override from one thing to another, although I know this town has done things I don't think are legal.
Well, it's not the override, Danny. The, the trash pickup itself is paid for out of the $110 million budget.
Yeah.
And, and the disposal of that, so.
Yeah.
That would be the process that, that I'm speaking of.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Just, what kind of plant was that?
It was a rose.
It's a money plant.
It was a rose. It's one of those species that the Conservation Commission say aren't native and you can't plant.
So you're telling me, Dan, you're telling me, you're the miracle grow that's going to fix that plant?
What?
You're the miracle grow?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I will show you the plant. You come to my office, it'll be, next spring, it's going to be beautiful.
Okay. Thank you.
Be in the same pot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate it. Next up is Paul, is that Rich? Is that Rich here in the seat?
I didn't look at my notes.
All right. We'll go to the next candidate, Mark Finneran.
Good evening. Mark Finneran, Precinct 6.
Tell us a little bit of why you want to be on the committee.
Okay. Basically, the, as I understand it, after the town soundly voted down the request for capital last town meeting, someone suggested that the town may not have advertised or informed the public sufficiently as to the need of this capital. And on the surface, I actually thought that was true, but I think that, after I analyzed it a little bit, the last thing that we want to do is go and simply ask the taxpayers to pay more. I think there's many missteps that we've taken in the past that we should try not to repeat. I mean, Mr. Jack, you built a $6.5 million water tower that's 35 feet too low. I mean, and it's the wrong kind of water tower. We're contemplating having him spend $40 million. I think there's people in positions in this town that aren't capable. We have an infrastructure that's falling apart, and it was always maintained before. I don't think we have the people that can properly maintain our infrastructure, and I know many people share this feeling, thought, with me. I think that we should turn the camera around and look at home first before we go ask the taxpayers. They pay too much already, and there's, in my belief, my knowledge, there's a lot of incompetence, a lot of poor performance, a lot of wasted money, and a lot of abuse of our infrastructure that shouldn't be taking place. Simply throwing money at it isn't going to fix it. And in the end, whatever money we throw at it, will, will be all that much for the worse. And, you know, you've got nine people on that thing. If I'm the only one that represents this point of view, so be it. But I think it's valid, and I think it should be kept close when we're thinking about what our actual problems are, because we can't go on this way, it's unsustainable. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of Pollyanna's in this town that should open their eyes. And I don't know, that's my opinion, pretty straightforward. I know a lot about what goes on around here. I know where some of the closets with the skeletons in them are buried. I'm going to give you my point of view either way, and whatever. I mean, I'm ready to answer any questions you want, or if you don't have any, whatever. It's a point of view that needs to be considered.
First up, Pat.
Mark, if you have such a negative view of town government and the people who work in government, why would you want to be a part of it?
Ah, because the negative can't go on forever. I mean, I'm not negative. I mean, there are things here that I believe you people don't want to look at. You can turn, you can call me negative if you like.
No, I'm, I'm not calling.
But I'm just pointing out facts. There's negatives and there's positives. If it was all positives, we wouldn't be here begging for money.
Well, maybe you'd like to answer my question. I'm not calling you negative. I'm calling what you, you are expressing viewpoints that are very negative.
No, I'm.
And so if you have that negative point of view, why would you want to be part of a group that you find very negative? Would you try to make it positive, and how might you do that?
Ah, I think that there needs to be much more accountability in this town. Again, I'm not making up these negative things, whether anybody wants to agree with me or not. I mean, for the most part, they're fact.
Well, well, I think you're missing my point, but then I'll go back to my next question is, you have applied for, in the past, off and on, for a couple of appointments in government, and each time you do, you always write a very nice, brief letter in your own handwriting. Yet we have a very, and have had for a long time, an application form that we ask people to use, and most, everyone does. Why do you choose to write a letter and not use the form?
Ah, as I was informed, anybody that was interested in the committee should notify the Selectmen's Office. I don't think that anyone ever referenced an application form. I mean, it's simply, you know, a cover letter. I mean, you know who I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Doc?
I don't. Could you please give me your experience in budgets, whether they're municipal and corporate? And also, I guess I'd like to know how your views could actually be helpful in a Capitol Advisor Committee working forward. Maybe this is saying the same thing Mrs. Flynn's saying, that you have some ideas and very concerned about the way things are running. I'd love to know how you think you can contribute to the positive working of this committee.
Accountability.
That has nothing to do with the.
It absolutely does. Would you give someone $40 million for a filtration plant that may or not be needed when he can't even build a $6 million water tower correctly? I mean, that's an honest issue.
We're talking about.
We're going to lose that court case.
Right now, we're talking about maintaining the capital projects we have.
Well, that's $6 million that was wasted.
We can't do anything, we're trying to move forward in a positive way, and I'd like to know how you feel, and I'd like to first know what experience you've had in working with budgets, either municipal or corporate, because that's a major part of what the Capitol Advisor Committee is going to have to be aware of.
Oh, yeah, there's many parts of it. My experience budgets, I have my own business. I've run my own business. I can see when someone's wasting my tax dollars. I mean, this problem we have has been coming for a long time, you know? Call me negative if you like, doesn't bother me. The reality is, what I say is true. And I mean, simply asking the taxpayers to pay more money, at some point in time, isn't going to be an option anymore. And I don't think the show is run quite as well as you'd like to believe. Call that negative? I don't, doesn't bother me. I mean, if there wasn't an issue, we wouldn't be here.
I would still like to know what you think you can bring to the committee to help work in a positive direction.
Reality.
Okay, David?
If you were on the committee right now, could you give me one idea you would bring forward, as I asked a previous person I interviewed, if you have one idea you'd like to bring forward that may assist us?
Yeah. I'd fire some people. Sorry. You know, we have incompetence, we waste money, we pay too much for too little. Everyone else has a household budget they have to live by, you know? You're asking people that are making $40,000 a year to pay the retirements of people that are making $80,000 when they're done. I mean, that's all right, that's a contract, but that, that's also, at some point, is going to be unsustainable. So I think before we hit that point, we should make sure that we spend the money that we do spend and we do have, spend it correctly. And we don't do that, and the dump is a perfect example. Millions of dollars have been wasted there. I mean, this whole 250-a-bag, it made the revenue from sticker sales fall $225,000 a year immediately. And the metal from the dump, nobody's ever done anything with it. Even when we were getting paid, let me give you, for instance, 2004, this town got $1,080 for its scrap metal. There's numbers that prove we were collecting about 1,000 tons a year. That's the equivalent of somebody driving up to a junkyard in a full-size, two-ton American vehicle and having the guy hand them two bucks. It's crazy. That's cash we could use. The place is completely mismanaged, and I think you're going to hear plenty of that tonight. You know, you guys can be Pollyanna's if you want. I mean, these are the truths.
Do you believe in enterprise funds?
Yeah, but I believe in proper management first, you know? I mean, absolutely, but I, I just don't see it working. Look at our Water Department. We haven't flushed our water mains since 2003. Every other town does it once a year. Look at our fire hydrants. They're rusting, they're a disgrace. I mean, we don't have the people on staff that can manage properly.
But all, some of these issues you're, you're talking about come under the capital, which is what.
I understand. It all costs money. I mean, money is capital. I mean, we waste it in one place, I mean, we could be spending it in another.
I mean, the argument is that our infrastructure is crumbling. Water mains are hidden, out of sight, out of mind, these different things, and hydrants are part of it.
They wouldn't be that way if they were flushed properly like every other town does. That's an issue. That's a negative. Sorry, but I'm positive it's correct.
Okay. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Chris?
Actually, Mr. Finneran answered the question I was going to ask.
Actually, Mr. Finneran answered the question, I was going to ask a question about, he mentioned waste, and I was going to ask him for some examples, and he mentioned the dumps, so, thank you.
That's a big one.
Okay. My question is this, this committee was formed by the Board of Selectmen, was instituted by the Board of Selectmen to help the Board of Selectmen come up with a funding mechanism. This is not going to be a committee that's going to come to the ideas and the ideals of how to run the day-to-day operation of this community.
Well, that's the problem-
Excuse me, I'm speaking if you don't mind. When I finish and fairing the question, you have every right to be answering. So the idea and the ideal is that you're going to bring back some suggestions to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen is going to try to take those suggestions forward. Again, keeping with the charter in this community, we don't have the ability to be able to run the day-to-day operations of this community. We have the ability to set policy and procedure. So can you tell me how you're going to help us set and find a funding mechanism without dealing with the day-to-day operations of this community, on this community?
Well, I go back to everything I said. When it happens day after day after day, when does it cease becoming a day-to-day and something that you should be paying a little bit more attention to? You know, I mean, the answer to this isn't throw money at it. That's, I'm going to stick with that, I'm sorry. I mean, there's problems. People don't want to admit it. I've been studying this thing for a long time, you know? I'm not making any of this up.
Mr. Finneran, oh, thank you. Mr. Finneran, it is clear that there is no operation, whether it be a business or a community, that runs without a hiccup. This board is seeking some advice and some help in a specific defined task. Quite candidly, I don't think you're going to be able to be helpful in the task. I appreciate your candor as we move forward, I appreciate you being an ombudsman for certain factions in this community, but you want to circumvent the process. My suggestion to you is that you run for one of these seats, because if you believe that your views are that accepted, that in fact, the voters and the taxpayers in this town will vote for you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Oh yeah, thank you. Doing a good job.
Mr. Zeb Rich here this evening. Okay? That concludes our interviews. The board has a decision to make, whether you want to find out why Mr. Rich didn't show this evening, or have, the letters were dated on September the eighteenth, so we don't know, in fact, today is the twenty-fourth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I always like to give these individuals the benefit of the doubt. There could have been some unforeseen circumstance that kept him from coming or notifying the board, so if it's the pleasure of the board, I'd move that we take this under advisement.
A second.
Motion to the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posh? Aye's have it, thank you very much. Okay, next up is a pay-as-you-throw presentation workshop. Now, I'm going to frame this workshop a little bit before we get going this evening. We're going to stay on target, we're going to stay on focus, and it's strictly a pay-as-you-throw curbside workshop. We're not going to dwell on other issues, there are other parts of the solid waste puzzle that will be dealt with on an ongoing basis. We have a solid waste contract that the Board of Selectmen in the next year, year and a half, or maybe sooner, will be dealing with. But in this particular scenario, this, oh, pardon me, I was going to skip, thank you very much for your help.
Oh, the summary of actions.
We're going to skip to the summary of actions so we can get some of these people out of here. I'll come back to this, I apologize. Summary of actions, number one, A is approved request for a special event, Brothers Bay Coalition Watershed Ride. B is approved request for a special event, British Beer Company, Lennon Fest, Belmont Heights, ten, seven, twelve. C is approved fifteen hundred dollar donation to the town, department donation account from Wild Harbor Estates Homeowners Trust.
I'm moving through here.
Motion, second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posh? Aye's have it.
Now, we'll go back to the pay-as-you-throw workshop. So I'm going to frame the workshop if I can for folks. Tonight, the issue and the reason we're having this workshop is that the town has, on its plate, has been given a grant for pay-as-you-throw curbside pickup, and the grant expires on October the first. The board has a decision to make whether to try to extend the grant or not extend the grant, whether to reapply for the grant or not reapply for the grant at this time. So tonight, we're going to focus on this one piece of the puzzle, and I would like to keep everybody on task. And the task is curbside pay-as-you-throw pickup. So we're going to have a presentation this evening from Ray Jack and the Department of Public Works. I'm going to open it up to discussion. I see some folks out there who are in the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, as well as individuals here in this community. So I'd like to get their input before the board makes some kind of decisions on this one particular piece of the puzzle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not to start out with a negative, but Mr. Finneran made a parting comment as he left the board, it's the last time he will ever do that to me. The next time, it'll be with an attorney present. This is municipal solid waste pay-as-you-throw and disposal only that we're talking about Couple of decision points the town's going to have to be at within the next several months, long-term disposal, this has to really do with the CMS contract, because that is expiring. So we're going to be researching our options at this time, as to what the long-term solution is going to be, and hopefully, within the next several months, I would say before the end of the year, we may have something to bring back to the board. Pay-as-you-throw, its purpose is really simple, it's a cost containment option, we're going to be going over some of the solid waste costs this evening. So its goal is not really to establish a revenue stream, although it does have all of the impacts of a fee, when you look at it. Its goal really is to just reduce the overall cost in order to reduce the solid waste volumes, and hence, reduce the overall cost. Contract expires December thirty-first of fourteen, cost will go up, currently, we're at seven, thirty-seven dollars a ton. But MTPC stands for Massachusetts Technology Park Corporation, that was a subsidy that the town received over multiple years, starting in two thousand and one. That will go away, so currently, that thirty-seven dollars a ton is a subsidy that we get for that. So it's not really thirty-seven dollars a ton. When you see the total cost that we pay for CMS annually at the present time, that doesn't equate to thirty-seven dollars a ton. Years ago, the subsidy was as much as eleven to twelve dollars a ton. Currently, it's about five to seven dollars a ton, but it's a credit that we get on the monthly invoice with CMS. So it will go away in two thousand and fifteen, and it's not coming back. So even the thirty-seven dollars, whatever it goes up to, we're really looking at an increase that went up from, let's say, twenty-eight, twenty-nine dollars or something like that to whatever that number is going to be. So I just wanted people to not be totally fixed on the thirty-seven a ton.
So can I stop and ask a question? So currently, our rate is less than thirty-seven, or it's more and it's subsidized to bring it to thirty-seven?
It is thirty-seven, but we receive a subsidy under the thirty-seven, so we're paying less than thirty-seven, but by contract, it's thirty-seven. And then the subsidy kicks in on a monthly basis, we get the bill that shows the thirty-seven, and then we get the subsidy behind it. All right, right on the invoice from CMS. The primary disposal options that we are going to have would be CMS, because they're an existing facility that we have an agreement with, and that agreement expires at the end of two thousand and fourteen. So we could amend the agreement for a number of years, could be five, ten, or fifteen. Then there's BORNE, and there's a similar opportunity with BORNE. BORNE had sold their airspace, if you will, so they gave it to CMS for their ash, and that happened very recently, within the last few months. So all that leaves BORNE now is about thirty thousand tons a year, as far as free airspace. Of the thirty thousand tons, they're reserving six thousand tons for themselves, which is smart. The other twenty-four are basically on the market. They have indicated a willingness that they would allow the surrounding towns to be able to participate in that. Our current, our current total tonnage is about twelve thousand tons, so if we were to enter into an agreement with BORNE, we'd eat up about half of their available tonnage. And then there might be some for the, some of the surrounding towns, or that could go out on the open market. Regional, that's the Cape Cod Commission Solid Waste Advisory Committee for that acronym there, and we are participants in that, so I am on that committee. It doesn't meet on a regular basis, it's rather irregular. In two thousand and eight is when CMS had come up with a proposal that they wanted the towns to sign into an MOU, so that they would exclusively negotiate with CMS at that time, to amend the existing agreement, then, starting in two thousand and nine, and voluntarily escalate our costs annually to take us up to the equivalent of seventy dollars a ton by two thousand and fifteen. And that the intent there was that we would be guaranteed ten percent below market rate, all right, with a guaranteed escalator under the Boston Index of no more than four percent. So that was pretty much rejected wholesale across the board by Cape communities of the twenty-nine CMS communities, fourteen of them are Cape and Islands. So that's where the Cape Cod Commission Solid Waste Advisory Committee came back into being, if you will, and started revisiting what the options were going to be other than CMS. Since that time, over a year ago, matter of fact, almost two years ago, there was a study done for what the available options would be. The committee put a proposal out on the street, it was called an RFI, or Request for Expressions of Interest, from multiple sources, to see if anybody would actually bid on a regional solid waste solution for disposal. There were a number of firms that had replied to that, but none of them were considered viable, and under such a very loose scenario, they certainly weren't willing to lay their cards on the table. So they recently did it again, and now, the responses were a bit more serious, they did give numbers, and they did give options. Based on my review, most of those options would be above what we would be paying under any of these scenarios, right here with CMS and/or BORNE. We had a meeting on, on October, I'm sorry, August twenty-ninth is when we had a meeting to review those proposals. A subcommittee of this committee is now going to review them a bit further and take a couple of them seriously over the next, they had said sixty to ninety days at that time. So that was almost a month ago. So we probably need to see how that's going to play out in order to make a determination for our solid waste in the end. I just don't know at the present time whether that's going to be a beneficial option for the town, but we'll be able to filter through that. So these are the costs that we're talking about here, and I want to run down them very briefly for you. Curbside MSW, that's the trash contract for collecting trash off of the streets. I'm giving you fiscal year ten, eleven, and twelve numbers, and then we jump up to what it's expected to be in fiscal year fifteen. What you can see here, however, is that the costs, almost across the board, are going up annually regardless of the disposal contract we're talking about. Curbside recycling, that's for picking the recycling up on the street, and as you can see, it's roughly half of what the curbside trash is, and the primary reason for that is trash is weekly, recycling's bi-weekly. So they're only collecting at half as much. CMS, this is what we actually spend on each of these particular years, and that is not at thirty-seven dollars a ton. That is the total cost that we actually expend, which is a subsidized cost. Mass Coastal, that's the rail transport that comes out of the rail station, at the Upper Cape Transfer Station. You can see that the cost went up here fairly dramatically in fiscal year twelve, and that's due to commercial tonnage that came in, because we, meaning the town and family, has to pay that bill, but then we get reimbursed through a tipping fee later on. The Upper Cape, UCRTS is the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, that's a relatively stable number. The number that you see up there is our share of the cost of operation in that facility, so that's only family's share, that's not the total cost. Total budget is about three hundred and eight thousand dollars a year for that facility, and then the other towns pay their respective share. So our share is based on our participation or our tonnage values that come through the facility, so we're almost always over fifty percent every year. The tipping revenue, we get a report from the Upper Cape Transfer Station, it comes back here to Town Hall, invoices are sent out to each of the respective haulers who brought commercial waste in, they pay the tipping fee and the transport fee. That goes into the general fund here at the town, it doesn't go back into the respective budgets, but it does go into the general fund. So you can see that those numbers went up as well, but it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in fiscal year twelve, and that is because of the increased commercial tonnage that came into the facility for fiscal year twelve. So on a total across the board, you can see that it's going up over a hundred thousand dollars a year, just on the numbers that are shown, but then if you look at fiscal year ten to fiscal year fifteen, you're looking at a nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar spread across those years. So that's the equivalent of fifty-three percent increase over a five-year period, or just over ten percent per year, as far as the cost goes. So at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars over a five-year period, this is what it buys, because a lot of people don't have a tendency to equate those numbers into real-time scenarios. It can buy three to four firefighters, and this presumes that that cost is a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So that's three to four firefighters every year for four years, and continue to be able to pay them thereafter, due to these increases or not, where we just go out and incur a one-time expense of a hundred thousand dollars because we bought something, and that expense is over. These expenses, once they go up, that's each end every year, so it's a recurring expense, it's a cumulative expense. Or it could buy three or four police officers, or three or four teachers, it can provide for the town's annual fleet-wide replacements, which includes the public works, fire, and police, for two years. Pay for twenty thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-four gallon recycling carts, these are the wheel carts, at one per household, for a total of eight hundred thousand dollars at forty dollars each. So I mention this because even under a pay-as-you-throw program, I think that the town might want to consider the opportunity for bringing carts, wheel carts, into the mix. I think that in towns that have them, the residents actually do like having them. So in this particular case, this is probably only talking about recycling carts, as opposed to trash, but if you double that number, you would have the cost for trash carts as well. But that could be factored into a pay-as-you-throw program. I think that this is probably something that a lot of people get confused with. The lower number here, thirty-seven, and then seventy for fiscal year fifteen, that is what everybody's really focused on, and I don't mean just family, I mean, towns across the Cape, are focused on the disposal cost alone. Now, when you saw the disposal cost, and it'll be coming up again in a minute, it's really not that big of a piece of the pie, if you will, on our overall disposal cost. So what I have here, taking that same chart, and if you divide it by the tonnage that we have every year, you can see that where we're really going over this five-year period is from fiscal year ten, we're going to just under a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, to almost two hundred and thirty dollars a ton. So that's the actual cost of what it costs to dispose of trash, as opposed to just focusing on the disposal element alone, because this includes collection as well. So some of the options, no action or do nothing. I think most people are familiar with that, because if you're going to be looking at alternatives for just about anything, a no-action alternative is a viable option, meaning literally do nothing about it, leave the status quo. But some of the facts are, the cost is still going to rise, we're still going to have to contend with that, and the budget is going to have to fund those increases. And for this, there aren't many options, because when we have budgets in other areas, we may be able to find a way to cut that budget. As far as the costs that I've shown you this evening, those are real-time costs, we have to pay those curbside contracts, no matter how many tons we have, that's irrelevant. That's a fixed fee that is going to be paid under those contracts, and we have to pay those bills, we can't choose not to. Reducing municipal solid waste volumes, this is a cost avoidance measure, so a pay-as-you-throw program is one of the most effective, and it's a very simple scenario, if you will, that when people actually have to start paying more for something, they become more conscious of what those costs are. So it's considered one of the most effective, and not just for trash, but water conservation, when you increase water rates and things of that nature, or wastewater rates, it forces conservation to occur, and it just happens to be the most effective. Mandatory recycling is another option, but it's not as effective as pay-as-you-throw. The last item here, washed hands approach, many people aren't familiar with that, but I think it's important for people to take a look at it tonight. It basically eliminates the collection, transport, and disposal. So what that means is that we get out of the trash business. Now, I know that this is not something that I would necessarily recommend, or even the board would entertain, but it actually is intriguing, because these are the costs that are associated with what we're talking about. And we are talking about three million dollars in fiscal year fifteen, so it's not just a couple hundred thousand, but this is what happens with the washed hands approach. All of it goes away. All of it goes away. We get out of the trash business. People contract for their own curbside collection, and the town has nothing to do with it, so there are no costs, we have no contracts to fulfill. So it may seem extreme, but it is a reality, and when we are talking about that reality, it's a $3 million a year reality. So I consider pay-as-you-throw. This is really from DEP. I think it's important, because it goes back to where it used to be, 50 years ago, where that free concept came in. Many towns had their own landfill, and they already owned the property, so they didn't have recurring expense, and people would bring everything to the dump, so they didn't really even have curbside collection. So back then, you really could call it freight. Then, of course, 40 years ago, that's when we had more prepared foods, more packaging, and also the concept of recycling started to take hold following World War II. 25 years ago, that's when we got into a lot of environmental controls, and that's when EPA was created in 1970, so after that time, they started to close the landfills and initiate waste energy facilities in multiple forms. And so even with Falmouth, we're one of those towns that had to start to pay to truck that waste for 30 miles, and start paying the tip fees. And then there are also the collection system costs as well. Theoretically, at that time is when the residents should have begun to share costs, if you will. Then 11 years ago, with very tough regulations, and these are getting worse all the time, waste banned items is when DEP just comes out and says, "You cannot put this in the trash anymore." They normally don't tell you where you can put it, though, and that becomes problematic. It's left up to each individual town to try to figure out how to handle these things. So you think about mercury thermometers, and you have light fixtures, and televisions, and across the board, so it becomes very difficult. So the last statement here, it started out with free, and then it says, "Now with transportation and expensive operations, it makes no more sense to make trash free to the residents than to have the town pay everyone's electric bill." The free concept here, though, is that because people don't see the bill, and people don't see the cost, and they're not paying a utility bill, then it's incorporated into their taxes, hence the term free. But it's not free just by virtue of being in the taxes. They are paying for it as part of that tax base. This is from DEP as well, this is a state map that's showing you that there were 54 municipalities that have curbside collection and went to pay-as-you-throw, and 82 municipalities that are considered drop-off communities have their own transfer station that are also pay-as-you-throw. And the numbers do start going up each year, there are more and more towns that go toward This is interesting, this was from EPA, but as far as climate change and/or clean air, pay-as-you-throw helps to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions associated with the making, because it does take energy to produce products and package products. The distribution, which means they've got to truck them, they've got to move them by rail, ship, whatever the case may be, flying, and then, of course, the ultimate disposing of the products. So this I found to be very interesting, if just 200 more communities adopt the pay-as-you-throw and reduce their waste by 20%, greenhouse gas emissions will be cut by 3.8 million metric tons of carbon emissions. And that equates to taking almost 2.8 million cars off the road for almost a year. So I know it's not intimate with municipal discussion, but in the bigger picture, it does have a climate effect, and a clean air effect. So pay-as-you-throw is also known as a pay-as-you-throw, or per-bag fee. What it is, it's a user-based fee, which shifts the portion of the cost to the user, and when we talk about a couple of these models, we'll see what I mean. We're not talking about pushing all of the costs onto the user. Current structure, everything is under property taxes. Under option number one, all costs could be on a per-bag fee. Now, that's an extreme scenario, and that's not something that we do. But option two is very logical, which is a model that comes between the two of those extremes. So we would have a flat fee on a tax bill to cover the fixed costs of what our operations are, and those are things like curbside recycling, curbside trash, the disposal contract with something like CMAS or BORN, that can be up or down, because the fee would be fixed, but it's based on how much tons come in. So if you reduce the tonnage, the costs go down. The same thing would be true of transport. If we're paying a transport fleet, like we are with MS Coastal, the more you transport, the higher the cost, even though it's the same unit volume. Then we would have a user fee for variable costs, so in this case, if we offered one container a week for free, meaning under the taxes, and of course, they do get their recycling collected under that as well, so that's the benefit that they get for what stays on a tax base, and then the per-bag fee would just be over a single container, so for each additional bag that you would have over and above the typical container you would pay for. In a case like that, you're paying for your own trash, not someone else's. There are perceptions of this being an additional tax, and I would get back to our chairman's reference with Mr. Shear earlier about a fee and a tax also on this. So for refunding existing revenues, we'd make a revenue neutral. Now, that means if we have a $3 million cost, and we determine that $1 million of it is going to be shifted to a per-bag fee, if you continue to collect the $3 million and the bag fee, then you created an additional tax, there's no question about it. If, however, you look at and say, "What we're going to shift over, we're going to give back on the tax side," then it's not actually a tax, if you will. It will be a new fee, but since you're refunding a portion thereof. Now, one of the ways to do that would be to take advantage of an opportunity. So let's say you're paying $3 million on it, and you say, "We need to cover increased costs of $500,000 to $1 million on the bag fee," and you successfully do that, then through you, what can happen is you can say, "All right, we already have this money on a tax base," and as opposed to just refunding it back and reducing it accordingly, we have the operating budget issues that we need to address, we have capital needs that we need to address. And I do believe that the town, at least given what I've seen, will be willing to entertain things like that as a means of achieving those results without increasing the taxes, because the money would have stayed in the tax base, it would have been recommitted to other areas. So it's just an option. But I wanted to put all this out front because of the discussions about it, being an additional tax, it is, there are towns that do this and don't say what I just said, and then people realize after the fact, "Wait a minute, you didn't reduce my taxes, okay?" And there are towns that have actually done that. So as far as a fee and a tax, there are benefits for businesses as well, because certain fees, like a water rate for certain businesses, they have write-offs that they can take for that, where they can't necessarily do it if it's on a tax base. So it's considered then a business expense. So for some opportunities like that, businesses have a different meaning between a fee and a tax. The last time that we had spoken about this, I gave a number of different models for different communities, and as you can see on this, this is just some of the general successes, if you will, that have existed in the Commonwealth. So they're only showing you percentages here, but for each and all of them, there are models that the board could take a look at, but I had shown a number of them before, and I didn't want to belabor the point this evening. For the program benefits, fairness, residents would pay for only their own trash, and that's similar to a utility bill. Low-volume users, seniors. The last time, well, not the last time we had a discussion, but I remember when we went through the curb contract a few years ago, and we were talking about the carts, and one of the big issues became the seniors, that they couldn't manage the carts. And whenever we go through a water rate or sewer rate increase, we do try to take care of those who either cannot afford it and/or have problems with it. So in the case of seniors, they don't generate that much trash, they really don't, they have a little white plastic kitchen bag that they take out every week. So they're very low-volume users, and there are a lot of people that fit this bill, and I happen to be one of them, I generate maybe a trash can a week. But in that scenario, for all the people that have three, four trash cans out there, or 10 bags of trash out there, they are being paid for by everybody else who's a low user. So this is actually a beneficial program for low-volume users. One of the incentives is that the cost is directly attributed to the resident, because if they generate less trash, they have fewer costs. Economic, it decreases our solid waste cost, and it increases our recycling percentages. Environmentally, less waste is produced, which protects the natural resources such as water, air, and land. For administration, if we went into a bag fee, we wouldn't have any additional administration on the part of the town that would be required, because there are vendors out there that handle this process. Basically, they manufacture the bags, they produce them, they sell them to the retailers themselves, they make the contacts, they will track all the sales, invoice the retailers directly, so we have no involvement, they handle all the accounting, and then every month, we get a complete report of how many bags they sold in town, and what the costs were, and then the check for whatever is left comes to the town, and they get a cut off the top, and that cuts generally about 10%. Obviously, there's a big need for public education and outreach on this or any program. Some of the realities, it's not free, everybody is paying, just because it's under the tax base doesn't make it free. The facts are, the costs are going up each and every year, it is not waiting till 2015. Our costs per year now are going up the equivalent of $120,000 to $140,000 a year. By 2015, it will represent about 3% of the town's total budget, so it's a fairly significant number. On the prop 2.5, the town's budget can go up 2.5%, and generally does. But MSW is already going up 10% per year. So the other 7.5% above that 2.5, we've got to find the money for and pay. So it's going to cut into the budgets, whether they're operating or capital, it's going to cut into something, which means that there is going to be a corresponding reduction in some kind of service. For the next steps, to evaluate the programs, meaning look at the various program types, ascertain if there's going to be anything beneficial for the town, then pick a program, do the community outreach, conduct some workshops, and then make a decision if we want it or not. The board would have a much better flavor as to whether or not it's going to be community acceptable, so either adopt it or not, and then if we did adopt it, then we could implement it. So the recommendation this evening would be to consider pay-as-you-throw and entertain it for the future as a cost containment option, it is not intended to generate a revenue, it's intended to cut the costs. So to explore it further and evaluate it. We do have a letter award of a DEP grant that's on the table now, and that was for $150,000, that expires on October 1st. The town, in order to get that grant, would have to take a positive action to adopt pay-as-you-throw for a minimum of two years in order for that to be effective, and then there are a couple other caveats that would be attached to that. So my recommendation at this point, I certainly don't expect all this to happen in a week, but I would say that over the course of the next six months to nine months, that the town move forward with some of the recommendations for looking at these options, we can provide additional presentations and information for the board to consider, and then to allow this DEP grant to expire, because we wouldn't be able to extend it, because that means we'd be holding on to the money at the state level, so to speak, where they would be looking and saying, "Well, if you're not ready to move forward yet, we'd like to be able to give the money to another town." So that's what it really means. So here, we would just be allowing it to expire, and I say without prejudice, I think it's important. If the board were to act definitively tonight and say, "No, we don't want pay-as-you-throw at all," the message to DEP, of course, is that it would not be a favorable application if we went in a future year to try to get the money. But to say that we're not ready, which I do not believe that we are to do this at the present time, provides us with that opportunity to come back. And then for disposal, continue exploring our options, and my hope is that within the next couple of months, hopefully maybe before the end of the year, we'll be able to come back with a proposal that the board could consider in order to establish our long-range disposal options.
Okay. Great. I want to open it up before I go to public comment, just for questions from the board of Ray, and then we'll go to the public comment, which would include some other opinions in regard to this.
My actually is a fairly trivial question, but just to clarify how I understand it. I almost prefer to think of the model as pay as you waste, because there is no pay for recycle. What we're talking about is paying for things, if you recycle a lot, you're not going to see any kind of increased fee.
Correct.
And you're not paying just to throw it on the curbside, you're paying to throw waste on the curbside.
Correct.
And in some way, I really want to make sure that very clear, that, because that's the two pieces of this, is really trying to encourage recycling and reduce the amount of waste you're putting out on the stuff that cannot be used some other way.
Yes.
I have one other question. The question is, if we encourage more recycling, you never showed us what the increased cost of the collection of the increase in the recycling would be. Currently, we only have once a week, once every two weeks. What would be the increased cost? There has to be a cost for the collection of that. I realize that the disposal is not there, but we need to be able to weigh that out as well.
And that would be true. If we increase the number of collections to once a week, I can honestly say you're probably, we're probably going to have to double the contract cost for the contractor. If you were talking about an increase in volume significantly over what they're collecting now, that could be a negotiated value with the vendor as well, and it wouldn't be that much, if you will, because it's expected that if we're running at about 28%, which we are, if we went up to 32%, we're not renegotiating for 4% on a five-year disposal contract like that. But at the next contract term, now we have to tell them, "Okay, what's our tonnage and what's our percentage?" You know, and if that's a higher number than it was when that contract started initially, then it would go up at that time.
Okay.
But yes.
On that same vein, if we were to establish a goal to reduce trash and increase recycling, and then to set percentages on that, we want to reduce trash by 30%, and we want to, say, increase recycling by 40% or 50%. Has anybody put together models that would show, if those were your goals, what options you would have? I mean, what would the options be? If those were your goals and that's what you wanted to achieve, I would think there are only so many ways that you could do that. I mean, there wouldn't be a whole buffet necessarily of options. But are there models out there that show those kinds of scales based on cost, or something maybe could be done without a whole lot of work, to put a model together of the 30%, 40%, 50% going either direction?
We actually, believe it or not, we would try to show you that. Not just so much on the per-bag fee, but even if there's other options of, like mandatory recycling, we mentioned it this evening, it's less effective, but it does have an effect. And you would need to know what that effect is in order to be able to determine, well, which way do we want to go? So you'll have options such as that, that will have those numbers in there, that'll say it can reduce it by X based on this, and this, and this.
Because it would seem as a community that we would want to come together on goals that we want to achieve, and once we know what they are, then we can explore the models and see what our options are. But to try to explore the models and the options without knowing what our goals are doesn't really tell us much, it just makes us upset.
Yes.
Okay. Question?
Yes. I've got some figures here from Attleboro, I guess they went to pay-as-you-throw back in 2005, and they mentioned that trash decreased by 31%, recyclables increased by 34%, which sounds really good until, and Mr. Neto might appreciate this because of a presentation he did a few years ago, it talks about the average trash per household dropped from 49 to 33 pounds a week, so a drop of 16 pounds per week, but the recycling increased only from 8 to 11, so there's 3 pounds a week. So the question is, where'd the 13 pounds go? And I guess this is one of the questions I have, because Attleboro is, I guess, an example of various communities where we see increases in percentages and decreases in percentages, but when we look at the pounds, it seems like there's a discrepancy. Clearly, there's 13 pounds of waste in that household, do we have any accounting as to where it's going? Because one of the concerns that was raised, and I know we're not supposed to talk about the dump, but when we went to the per-bag fee at the dump, one of the concerns that was raised was that the trash was going to end up by the side of the road. Do we have any idea, sort of accounting as to where the rest of the trash went?
Specifically for Attleboro, my answer would be no, I don't know. But generally speaking, even when I showed you the increases in percentages and everything, those are just the increases in recycling percentages, all right? It didn't show you what the recycling percentage went to. So like if you say, "Well, solid waste went down by 30%, recycling should go up by what? 30%?" Or something like that. But you'll see that the numbers never do match. And one of the reasons why, a couple of the reasons why, is some of the larger components of solid waste as we know it today, after you've already taken our current recyclables out, like bottles and cans and things like that, of the remainder, two of the major components in that trash bag are organic waste and textiles. And textiles are kind of funny, because it's not just clothing, all right? It's when you get rid of your drapes, or towels, or whatever the case may be, there's a lot of textiles in there, and they've done a lot of research on that recently, in order to try to establish the organic programs, curbside organic programs, and commercial organic programs, get the food waste out. So on some of the organics, some of it actually is, like yard materials and stuff, that doesn't go into the recycling, it goes back into composting. Some of the textiles go to Salvation Army's, they go to swap shops, so a lot of materials that were in the trash before that are not in there now are, in a sense, being reused, if you will.
Most of those are denser, so their weight is Most of those are denser, so their, and their weight is going to be much higher than all the other things.
Right, right. And I'm not saying that that's the total, okay? Because I think Mr. Putnam has a valid point that even in Falmouth, I think we would recognize that with commercial dumpsters and what have you, there are people, and I've seen them do it periodically, where people are taking their own trash and putting it into a dumpster. So I can't say that that doesn't happen, but not on a scale that justifies the numbers that we're talking about. So when we're talking about taking municipal solid waste down townwide or citywide, you know, a fairly substantial number, and then the recycling increase is only this much, it's not as though hundreds of tons of trash are finding its way around that way. That's generally not the case. And there are a lot of people that have looked at a lot of these and would be able to attest to that. So that would be part of what you need in the future as well. It's not just a slide with a model like that, but people here that said, we've looked at this one, this one, and this one, and this is what we found.
I have some points that I'd like to make, but I'm going to wait until after I get some comments from the public here, as well as maybe the board would want to have some comments after everyone's done as well. I know that it's a topic of conversation out there with many folks I meet wanting to know my thoughts on this. Of course, I want to continue to gain as much information on it as I can, but I do have some basic thoughts, and I'm sure members of this board do. I know that at our retreat, some of these thoughts came up. So I want folks to know that these are items that we talk about, and maybe you can get some inclination this evening too, of where the framework would be from this board. We're surely not going to take a vote on what, how things are going to morph in a year and a half or two years, but as we move down the line. So if you don't mind, I'm going to take some comments from folks in the public, we're going to move the microphone back, because those folks who want to come up and speak are going to have to add to you.
Would you have a time limit to people?
I'm going to try to keep folks on task and try not to repeat what someone said just before you. If you want to agree with that, please just acknowledge it. But again, this, you know, the agenda calls for an hour. We're going to spend some time on this, so that's to keep the agenda moving, flowing in case we ran out of time, but I mean, had extra time. So first one up is Netto, and then I'll get down the list, okay? Have to go to the microphone if you don't mind. You'll go to the microphone, please. Because knowing.
I can answer.
Well, you got to answer it at the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, Joe Netto, Precinct 9. I appreciate having the opportunity to get up here and speak, but as Mr. Hampson just said, we had a presentation that took 40 minutes, and I have numerous rebuttals.
No, no one's told you to sit down, Joe. So go right ahead and freewheel about here.
All right. Does the town of Falmouth need a pay as you throw grant? No, it doesn't. It does not need to accept 150,000 dollars from the state and then take with it the demands from the state. I had numerous opening comments and listening to Mr. Jack's presentation, but I'm going to start with a question that Selectman Flynn had. What are the goals? First of all, I've got to preface this, that if you were going to look at pay as you throw, you should reapply for the grant. There is one model of the pay as you throw grant that I would wholeheartedly support, and that's the hybrid system. There are some things that the state, when they came down in that workshop, and Mr. Jack put up, again, into the public's view, that my neighbor pays for my trash. And that's wrong to use that statement. And I'll get to that later. And I wish we would stop using that. And I'm going to get into how we pay for the trash pickup in Falmouth. I've gone over this with the town manager, Mr. Suso and I have discussed this. This is my third time standing in front of this group, was in front of town meeting and twice here, talking about trash in Falmouth. Why? Because it affects my parka book greatly. But let's get to some figures. And these figures come from the town's assessors office. I don't do the addition and subtraction, I go and see those town people who are responsible for those figures. What does it cost you to take the trash from my house, 28 Clark Street, to C-Mass? Dirt cheap. We have one of the best trash collection systems in the state. Our figures support that. Could we be better? Of course we could. You know, you lose 10 pounds, might as well lose 15. And it's an environmental issue that I wholeheartedly support. We have to reduce the amount of trash. We would be much better off spending more time in educating the public and using what we do so well. I'll try to move a little quicker. Okay. What does it cost you? It costs you, first of all, you don't go by the household. Trash is paid for by the tax rate. Solid Waste Advisory Committee put out some figures that are wrong. They divided the cost by the household. They forgot that 6% of the tax base is business. 6% of the tax base in this town that doesn't get the benefit of curbside pickup pays for my trash to be taken. And I want to change that? I do? Okay. Thank you, Danny. Of the private residences, 35%, again, the assessors office, are seasonal homes, where the trash is only picked up at the most for six months a year. And I want to change that. I'm a year-round resident. 13,000 homes, according to Mr. Bailey, are here seasonally. They pay the tax rate. Now, what is the exact figure? Very simple. It costs you, not by the household, but by the value of your house. The more the value, the more that person pays. Well, the flat rate is 22 cents per thousand, is Mr. Bailey's printout. Okay? The average house in Falmouth is 450,000 dollars. Currently, under this year's budget, it costs you $99.26 to take that trash, as Mr. Jack showed you with all the graphs, from my curbside, that's the curbside, to Otis, which is the Tiffin fee, the train, and the C-Mass, including the grant. But by the way, no one ever mentioned the grant till I brought it up at the Selectman's presentation in 2010. We were never told about the grant. So that's what it costs you. It's on your tax rate, not your household. Now, let's look at the fairest tax that we pay in the town of Falmouth. It's the town, it's the tax that picks up my trash. 50%. Now, this is retired school teacher talking here. 50% of my tax goes to the education of the children of Falmouth, and I gladly pay it. Do I use it anymore? No. But all of us that pay a real estate tax get our trash picked up. And that's where I take a great deal of umbrage. When we develop a philosophy and presentation that talks that my neighbor's paying for me to pick up my trash, I pay for my own trash through the tax rate. Now, the more we recycle, the one barrel versus the neighbor down the street that may have four barrels, maybe they pay four times as much in real estate tax. Did anybody look at it that way? I'm sure the guy that pays taxes on a two and a half million dollar home should be able to put out more trash in front of his yard than I do with my tax bill, because that's fair and the democratic way in the town of Falmouth. Mr. Flynn, I've got good news for you. By the way, have any of the members of the board of Selectman read the grant? Have you talked to Tina Klein, the grant administrator? None of you have read the grant? I'll mail it to you. I'll email it.
Well, I've read the grant. I haven't talked to them.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, give me an email and I'll mail you the grant. I've read the grant, talked to Ms. Klein about it. I don't think we need the state's 150,000 dollars, because with it, your trash barrel for two years can be no larger than 40 gallons. That's the regulations that the state says. In 2010, Mr. Jack gave us a presentation telling us to go to the 65-gallon trash barrel. And here's where we have to do a lot more discussion, folks. Which way are we going with the trash in Falmouth? And I'm, please, I'll try not to mention the dump, but that's where it all started. The figures, the decision that was made by this board of the 250-a-dollar bag fee, and I'm here, I'm here to give you figures, and you folks were never told that you hadn't been paid for metals for 18 months until I did that at town meeting in 210 with that The figures that I have on the increase aren't quite as dramatic.
No, stay focused. Pay as you throw.
Pay as you.
Curbside.
Okay, curbside.
Thank you.
If you are going to have to get the trash barrels reduced, you also, as Mr. Jack showed you, part of the grant, there's no maybe, you have to, on a weekly recycling, you have to offer each household a 65-gallon barrel. If you stay on a bi-weekly, it has to be a 95-gallon barrel. Well, he finally gave me the price that I've been trying to look for. There's 20,000 homes, 20,000 homes in Falmouth, he came up with a figure of $800,000. Well, that $800,000, to me mathematically, is more than the 150 the state was going to give you. What fiscal decisions are we making here? We're going to pay 800,000 to get 150? We do an excellent job, and I'll let some other speakers. Mrs. Flynn, I've got real good news for you. The EPA says that every household in the state of Massachusetts produces, this is from their website, produces one ton of trash per year. And with pay as you throw, their goal is .58 tons per year. That's what the state wants you to get at. So when I took the figures provided by the Solid Waste Advisory and divided the number of households by the 12 tons that we have, guess what figure the town of Falmouth currently is doing right now? .58. We're there. We're there before we stop. The town of Falmouth is at the town's goal, and that's right from their website. And now, Mr. Putnam, I want to give you the answer to the question. The pot of trash that will never go away, and every town on Cape Cod has this same problem, and that's municipal trash, Mr. Putnam, and tourism. There's going to be very little recycling there. In the figures that I have done, the town produces 25% of its own trash. We have a packer, a little dump truck, that picks up 150 barrels every week in the winter. I talked to the man that runs the truck, and he picks up 200 barrels in the summer. That's Main Street, the bike path, some of the harbor master's office, the town marina. And that's the price that you have when you have a tourist community. When they stop and get their pizza box and eat it in the harbor, where do you think that box goes? There's no place to recycle it. So we're always going to have that. Mr. Putnam, the curbside trash contract provides for no charge to the municipality of all the municipal buildings. And this top building is picked up for no cost to the taxpayer, because it's paid by the curbside contract. Well, guess what is the largest contributor to municipal trash in the town of Falmouth? The school department. They're the largest restaurant facility in town. I talked to Mr. Dupree. I said, what do you pay for trash, Mr. Dupree? He says, Joe, nothing. It's paid for by the contract. So how are you going to pay for pay as you throw on the municipal side? Very simple. Joe, the taxpayer's going to pay for it. I beg to differ with Mr. Jack, the costs are not going to be reduced. You're making me pay a tax for service, and I don't mind that. Love to pay taxes when I get services. I'm still going to pay to dump the tourist trash. I'm using a businessman's money and 35% of the seasonal people, and you want to change that and take it away from me? Well, I'm not going to stay quiet on that, and I will do believe environmentally that we should work to reduce the amount of trash and increase recycling. But the figures are going to be there. They're not going to go away, they're not going to approach zero. Thank you. Just remember, 22 cents, and we're already at the state goal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Joe, Wednesday night, Precinct 9, some questions for the board, Ray, Jack, whatever. You're stating one bag is going to be free, and we pay for the others. Understandable, if that's the way you're going to go, which I hope you don't. Who wants to stop a neighbor from taking one bag and putting it in the yard of a summer resident all through the winter? Is the town of Falmouth going to come by and pick up the trash after the squirrels and the ravens and the birds get into it, come down my street and pick up the trash? Does the Selectman have any figures on how much trash is being picked up by the town other than that small little compactor for bags of trash or waste dumped around the town? I haven't seen the figures on that. It has to be some. If the summer people are going to get one bag, if we, our elected officials push this, they're going to be able to go to the dump with one bag free? They might not be here. I don't think so. If they're going to be paid dump fee, or they're going to pay $20 to get in the dump with one bag, that if was at their curbside, if they were here, they get it free. Where's that bag going to go? Somebody else's property, left out there? There's no reason, thought in this stating, my neighbor comes down on Thursday, or Friday, goes over to Sunday, he puts the trash out on Sunday night. Trash pickup on my street is Thursday. It's not a holiday, it's Friday. Where's that bag going to sit there all week? Neat and clean, no holes in it? I don't think so. And Mr. Joe just answered my question, how much is the town's trash? Is there a figure cost on that? You know, how much is the town actually paying out of my tax money to dispose their own trash? When I see some of the trash in this town hall, it's not recyclable, not recyclable. I think Mr. Suso should turn around and go around and look at some of these trash barrels and say, hey, what's that cocaine in there? How come that paper's in there, it should be in a box? It's not being dumped. So we're adding to the trash in this town. So, you know, my main questions are, is what about the summer person? My neighbor has two kids, he has to put out three bags a week. I put out one. What is to stop a someone that's buying these bags at 250, has a dump sticker, prepaid bag to go to the dump and pick the bag by the bottom, dump it in the dumpster back there, and walk out with the bag? Another question. Taking one person from that area, I know you're not talking about dump, but there's not enough supervision to see if this is implemented. How are you going to turn around and make sure that person doesn't grab the bottom of the bag and dump it? They're right, I can buy one bag every six weeks, seven weeks, as long as they don't stuff it and hold it. Think. Think ahead. For every action is a reaction. I went down the service, and I surely went in the fight department. You can sit there on your backsides, use your brains, play the computers, write notes. What's the action going to be when you go outside? Thank you.
Mr. Vieri.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dave Viera, precinct nine. I have a couple of questions. I missed the beginning part. I'm sorry, Mr. Jack, I didn't see the whole presentation. But I know that the grant application was focused on the discussion of curbside pay as you throw. And I know the grant application says that municipalities would be eligible up to $10 per household for a curbside, and up to $5 for a household for drop-off pay as you throw. And I'm wondering what, if anything, prohibits us from capturing the appropriation of this grant on our drop-off pay as you throw program, which has already been implemented out at the transfer facility? Is there an opportunity with the expiration of this one-year window for a grant that had already been appropriated for us to cost out or reimburse expenses for our drop-off pay as you throw program? So that was one question I have. The second, more of a statement I have is, we had a lot of discussions around town meeting coming up this year with some of the selectmen about notify, being notified of grants before they were applied for and having public hearings and all of that good stuff. And when I wear the hat as a, as a state official, and I see that there are municipalities that wanted to enter into a pay as you throw program this year and had to wait because other municipalities received a grant award, and that Falmouth went and applied for a grant, for a program prior to deciding if it wanted to go for a program, and has kept this $150,000 locked up until the expiration of this grant period, at which point it could revert, and then the DEP, through its next grant proposal round, could open it up for other towns. So I guess my word to whoever initiated this, and I'm not going to point fingers, I don't care. I want everyone to know, I find this disingenuous for the town of Falmouth to apply for this reimbursement grant, to hold these funds away from other municipalities without having made the policy decision if you wanted this program. Make the decision for the program, and then seek the grant and tie up those funds and use them. So that's the cautionary note. The other one is, I don't know, Mr. Jack, can we use it under this $5 per household for the drop-off pay as you throw?
Yeah, I can't speak to the $5 pay as you throw. That would, that's something I would have to look back into and let the board know probably sometime this week.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Viera, just FYI, this board has expressed its displeasure that we have applied for grants without following true to the idea and the ideal the board votes to authorize those applications and those acceptances of those grants. So moving forward, the board is very cognizant of that, and we will continue to make sure that grant applications are approved by the board of selection. Thank you. Joy Champs?
I'll be brief, Board of Selectmen. When the time comes for conservation of utilizing things that shouldn't be thrown away and things that are being thrown away now, I'd be glad to address that, okay? And it has to do with producing vegetables and recycling material that is able to, when you don't put meat and stuff like that in. But I'm very, very successful. What I do is I plant my compost pile, and I produce vegetables and all kinds of things out of it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Can someone hear the?
No, my hand, I have, I have something that's on my hands in the drawer to bring up at this meeting. And you have a copy of it.
I haven't got my glasses on, so someone could read that for me. My reading glasses, I apologize.
This looks like a, a letter to the enterprise?
Yeah, enterprise.
All right, it is from?
It says, it says what I want to say without, I have, I had in my hand, I just would like to see, I'd like people to listen, the people that are, the residents here wanting to hurt their town, I've shoved in the corner like, you're taking taxes in this town, and I'm here, I'm resident, I'm not someone who hides. I'm here, you're around.
We'll let Brent speak, you know, read this.
Read it to the record?
Yes.
And I'm quoting here from the, the letter. "It's very clear, CMAS increases its rate from $30 to $70 a ton. On the day the current contract ends, it's time to start a new industry, new industry, excuse me, to solve Cape trash problems. All you need is a simple, small facility to burn trash and make electricity. The Bourne ISWM site has a great supply of natural gas as a current waste product. There exists the site of the power station at the Cape Cod Canal and the former Otis Power Station at Otis, three good choices, because it would take a little time to get permits and build in the short term, except Bourne's offer as a municipal dump site. Stop dealing with CMAS. All the trash from every town on the Cape and Islands could keep it running and make a profit. Also, as a fuel, include all the construction waste that is currently shipped off Cape and shredded and returned to the Cape as fluff. The only current plan is pay as you throw. It's pitiful. Also, if all towns were shareholders, the profits would go back to each town." Ronald Johnson, I think it's, the street is cut off, but North Falmouth.
Okay. All right, is that's what you wanted to make first in? Thank you.
And if you had one, I'd send him a copy of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I was just wondering?
You have, please introduce yourself.
Oh, hi, I'm Linda. I'm precinct one. I live in a carpet apartment complex. I just wondered what, how they handle the trash in apartment complexes? Is it established?
Mr. Jack, would you like to answer the question of apartment complexes, how we handle?
There are some areas of town, some complexes, if you will, and even subdivisions that have covenants with respect to solid waste collection, that they have it right in their covenant that they have to pay for that. There are others, however, that have, were part of the original agreements that the town established several years ago for curbside collections, and we do add them periodically as long as they recycle. So the condition is you can't just pick up the apartment trash, there has to be a recycling component as well. And if they fail to do that, then we don't do it. But it, it can happen.
Thank you. Yes, Ruth?
I'm Ruth Frazier, precinct five, and chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I would just like to say that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee has been studying these issues for many years. We, our, our figures are very much the same as Mr. Jack's. We look at this as a fairly simple question. You really have two alternatives. One is to keep on as usual without making any effort to change what we do with our trash. In that case, the, the financial problems, the fiscal problem will simply not go away. It will be, as I think Ray Jack has shown you, you'll be confronting this every year. And you will have a choice between raising taxes or cutting services. We would urge you to examine the, the waste reduction option where you have at least two choices. You can have a full pay as you throw smart program that save, save and, there's an acronym for saving and reducing trash. With the, we, we were, we thought that the first bag, first container free was a more acceptable option because in the towns that have tried this, 75% of the households are able to manage with one 40 gallon or 35 gallon container. But in any case, we feel that you should examine that option carefully because, and not reject it out of hand. I would like to say something about Mr. Johnson's letter. It isn't as easy to build an incinerator, as Mr. Johnson suggests. The state of Massachusetts has not permitted incinerators in this state for several years, and there's, this moratorium is expected can continue. So this is, this is just not a feasible option. Also, it, a waste energy facility costs a tremendous capital outlay, and it's just unlikely that any local businessman is going to be able to do this, let alone get the permit from the state. And, and I would just like to take an opportunity to remind people that if their blue bin is too small for their recycling, because we hope that you will recycle as much as possible anyway, no matter what we do, you can get a sticker from here at town hall or from the DPW office on Gifford Street to put on any container, which will turn it into a recycling container, whether it's 95 gallons or 30 gallons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Neto, follow up?
Again, some information about the grant because the figure was just by the chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, who supports the same hybrid model that I do, but the figure changes, folks. The grant now becomes only $100,000. If you look, I think it's page 10, it's got the chart. If you allow one barrel free, the state will pay you $5 per household. So with the 20,000 households in Falmouth, when you multiply five times 20, I think it'd come up to $100,000. So the $150,000, which is the maximum, which we were awarded because the number of households on the grant application was listed as $31,357. And that's how I became involved in this, when I saw that the application had figures that weren't correct, and I called the state and went to the assessor's office. We were off by over $10,000, 10,000 households in Falmouth. So when I got a copy of the grant and found out that, I called the state and said, but they said, "Don't worry, Mr. Neto, because it's not official to, Falmouth actually applies for it and tells us what, one of the three that we want." We would be able to get, though, another $2 if we applied for the barrels. So we could get a total of seven on the good side, so seven times 20, 140,000. So when you, when you talk about the $150,000, folks, you're going to read this. You're going to read, you know, it's my money. It's my taxpayers' money. That's why I'm so interested in it. But anyhow, I just want to give you true and accurate figures from both sides, far and against. So when we just mentioned that, I'm surprised that we didn't tell the audience the true figure, it's no longer 150, it's only 100. We don't need the state's money. We don't, folks.
Thank you, Joe.
Do you have a question, Mrs. Flynn?
No, I don't.
I do. Can I ask you a question? How do they define household? Is that a single-family home? How does they account for condominiums, apartments?
Well, when I took the assessors, it's private homes and the total that we have, it's in my book. It doesn't even come close. It's like 21 when you add the homes, which are 18,000. I've got the printout from Mr. Bailey's office. We just make 20 pa, when we do the condos, everything. Where the 31,000 came from?
Could that be the population by mistake name?
No, it's not even, it's close.
Okay, well, let's not get in a debate about the number.
I thought it was an easy answer.
Anybody else? And then just the gentleman behind you hasn't spoken yet, and then I'll get back to you.
Mike Lexley, District Eight. That was a great presentation, but my problem was it didn't show the fines that we paid for not, because we hadn't kept up with our people that take, to pick up our trash. You know, and this thing's been going on for I don't know how long. I've only been on the Cape for 10 years.
Explain to me the questions for the fines.
What it is, the fines that we paid because we don't get enough trash out.
The fines we paid to, to the railroad and to CMAS for failing to provide the minimum amount of trash.
That was ridiculous. I mean, who's in charge of keeping these people, you know, in line? You know, that's a lot of money.
Sir, we're focusing on the pay as you throw tonight. I appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
That's, that's another whole line in that particular discussion.
But I do agree with them on the modified. I mean, but if you go with the, with it, you also have to remember, there's people on, that are on, in this town that can't afford, they can barely make it as it is. What are you going to do about them? What you're going to find is trash scattered all over because people can't afford it. You know? I, I, I'm, it's the same way when they did the, out at the, at the dump, when they did the bags. I sat there and I drive by the, the street department, by the fairgrounds, and I saw their dumpsters. Every week, they were jam-packed, full of crap that they pick up. Now, the crane area, they're unloading stuff in there. Because they're, they don't, you know, they're not going to pay. You know, that's one thing that people, I don't know if, if you realize it, but they're going, there's people out there that don't care. You know?
We realize that, sir.
You know? And I hope you consider, you know, when you do decide on something, to think about everybody in this community, just not the, the well-to-do or the people that can afford to pay. We've got people that can't afford to pay, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're talking about a possibility of a 250 bag. Now you're talking possibility of a 45, 65, or 95 gallon containers. Means I have to put, say, for example, I put two bags in the container, that guy is going to come by with the truck, going to count the bags I have in there. There's going to be one free one, there's going to be one I have to pay. So you're talking bags, or you're talking containers? If you're talking containers, that's a different scenario than a bag. You can get more stuff in the container than you can in the bag because you can squish it tighter. So you're talking two different roads down here, and I don't see incoming any place to a merger. And Ray Jack talking 250 a bag, then he's talking possibility of barrels. I brought this up last time about the barrels. I hate to see some elderly person trying to carry out 65 or 95 gallon barrel. In a few years, I'll be in crutches. I'm not going to sure be able to take them out there. I get my neighbor, he's a summer resident. The other neighbor, summer resident. The other kid goes to work at 5:00 in the morning. I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any last comments? I'd like to open it up a little discussion of the board. Before I do so, I'd like to make a few comments myself. I, I would like to say that I believe instituting or accepting this grant this evening would be putting the cart before the horse. First of all, we don't know what our disposal cost is going to be a year from January. There's a lot of gloom and doom out there, predicted it, it's going to be $90 a ton. Until we get the actual number, we have no idea how you can make an educated decision on how you move forward. That's my first point. My next point is a couple of issues. When we talk about low-volume users, we're a community. We don't judge people about how many people they have in their house. We surely want to encourage having families in this community, because otherwise this community will eventually die, dwindle and die. Well, we've seen the decline of families in this community, and the reason is because of the cost that it associated. of the cost that it associated to live on the Cape, to live in this community, as well as the fact that there is not as much opportunity for young families to be able to provide jobs. Collectively, as a community, I hope we're working towards the goal of trying to keep families here. We pay for schools. Most of us who are seniors, I look around this room, when I say seniors, our children are out of the schools. But we don't begrudge each other because we didn't have a child that used the schools, or even if we sent our children, not to those schools, sent them elsewhere. That's part of being a community, and that's part of being a democracy, that you take care of collectively your own group. I agree with some fees in scenario. I personally will say that I can't vote a backdoor tax increase on this community. It would be easy for the Board of Selectmen to say, "We're going to impose a fee." Well, then we have extra money left in the budget, so we can fund some additional services in the community. But you know what? That's a backdoor plan. That's, that's the way you go in the backdoor. If you can't build on the idea and the ideal that the taxes we collect can't pay for the services we provide, that's, that's something that we need to work on. We either work on cutting costs, or we work on raising revenue. But not at the backs of the folks that have already paid once. I will say that bags versus barrels, I'm not a big bag fan. I can tell you that I agree with this gentleman. I live in a neighborhood that's probably 50% seasonal folks. When there's a bag out there within a day, something's gotten to that bag. I know that I, I myself will walk out, if I go to put the trash out, and the crows are already there by the time I get the rest of the trash out. I don't, I don't know. It's kind of like there's a homing device on barrels for this issue. But it would greatly change the community face as we see it. So my scenario is that we'd be encouraging folks to put bags versus barrels. I will say that I had an opportunity this spring, the Selectmen and Councilors Association went to the island in Antucket. A lot of scenarios, I can be a skeptic, but as an old Irishman, I've learned to open up my eyes a little bit and listen. And over there, they do a mandatory recycling plan. Every bit of trash there is free, whether, no matter what you have, it's free. They don't want to see it on the roads, but they mandatory recycling. So what that means is, they're not allowed to throw anything away in anything except a clear plastic bag. Trash man pulls up, if you even have private trash. They pull up, they pull out the bag, they see a bottle in there, they see something else recycling, they put the bag back down. See you later, we'll see you next week. When you sort it, they'll pick it up, or they'll allow you to dump it. So I'm not going to sit here and solve the problem tonight, but maybe there needs to be some kind of hybrid there, because I think we can encourage that. I think we need to look at personally where our baseline is. Where are we right now with our cost of waste? What are we paying right now for collection? What are we paying for disposal? To me, that issue is still on the table. That issue is in our tax rate. Our tax rate goes up 2.5%. If we're going to climb above that as we move forward, we might need to come up with other alternatives, whether it be mandatory recycling or some kind of hybrid scenario. But those are issues that we need to work together as a, as a community to try to solve. I surely think, right now, we're a little premature in saying that we're going to do a mandatory recycling program. I surely can say that we're lucky, and Mr. Neto, I can tell you, it's 42% of our homes are unoccupied. They might not be seasonal residents, but are unoccupied. You know what? Those folks ask for very little services, and one of the services they ask for is trash pickup. They pay, I would venture to say, the 42% of homes probably pay 60% of the tax base. So we need to make sure that we provide those type of services. Granted, we can't, we only have, our rate of inflation is 2.5%. If that rises, trash collection and disposal rises above 2.5%, this board will need to make some kind of adjustments as we move forward. But I don't think there's gloom and doom in this room tonight, folks. I don't think this is necessary to make this judgment tonight. I think we need to walk slowly, figure out where our costs are going to be, and then maybe to make that judgment as we move down the road. I'm going to open that up to the rest of the board for discussion and comment.
I guess I would go ahead and make the motion, following Ray Jack's recommendation, that we decline the grant at this time, and have that be discussed on that motion.
Okay, so that's your motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Okay, now we'll open it up for discussion.
Well, actually, that's the next item on the agenda, though. Oh, are we taking it?
We can kind of merge it all together if you want. So at least that part of the discussion could be part of that. Did you want to make some comment?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? David?
Regarding the grant, Mr. Chairman, I, I've been accused a few times of being, you know, maybe over the top and negative about issues, and I'm not going to go back and say who applied for, let's just, I think we need to move forward in a positive manner, but whatever we do with this issue, we need to make sure the public's involved in it. And a lot of people have come up to me, and people have not hesitated in the past, especially when I had that boil water thing two years ago to call my home, and I encourage people to do that, because I do want to hear from the people who are going to be paying for this. I don't think it's, the time is right for the grant. I mean, we've had grants in the past where we've already discussed a particular issue, know where we're going. This sort of, a little bit premature, and, but I don't want to dwell on that. It's done. I'm going to vote not to take the grant at this time, but it may be something we look to in the future. But we have a lot of educating to do, and if, whatever we do, I want to make sure that all town buildings, you know, we're talking about getting grants to put docking systems for electric vehicles here, and maybe over in Pagnunen. We need to walk the walk like we're telling the people to do so. I think town buildings, school buildings, everybody needs to get on board with whatever we do, recycling, whatever, and it is going to be a big educational curve. This issue, to me, is just as important as water filtration and the wastewater we have coming down the road. So I'm going to, when the time comes, I'm going to vote to not accept the grant at this time, but I'm just encouraging people to get in touch with, I want to know what the people feel. I mean, I've heard some here tonight, but this is a big issue, and we're not going to solve it right away, but we have very knowledgeable people in the community who, you know, have stepped up to do other committees, you know, wastewater and others, and I think there's probably people in the community here who could, I'd like to hear from. So that's all I want to say for right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Brett?
I have nothing to add.
I do, actually.
Go ahead.
Well, I've decided that maybe it's the best time to make the comments now, as they relate to the grant, my comments now, because I think, I don't think we're ready for the grant at this point. I think we have really some, too many unanswered questions, and we don't have, it doesn't appear that we have a whole lot of agreement at this time on what direction we should take. So I think in addressing this whole issue, we have to, I'll go back again, we have to define what our goals are. We have to know what it is we want to achieve. Do we want to keep on doing what we're doing? And are we willing to accept the costs that are going to be associated with it? If we're not, then what are our goals in reducing our waste and increasing our recycling, and all the other pieces to it as well? So what are we willing to do? And then if we, if we come up with some ratios in terms of reductions, then what do the models look like? And if we look at the models, then what are the costs? And then maybe we might come up with two or three different models that we think might work, because we have to look at what the impact of that is going to be on people in the community, because this is ultimately going to be a community decision. And any community decision has to be based on facts. And that's what we need to be talking about, are the facts. And the models would be able to show us what those facts are. And then we, as a community, can say, "All right, here's our options. We have A, B, or C. And this, this is what the costs are, this is what the impact's going to be on me and my individual household, and this is something I can live with, something I can accept. Maybe I don't totally like it, but I like it for the community as a whole." So I think we're not 15% down the road yet to be able to say, to be able to commit ourselves to a grant. I think we have to do a little bit more work, not a lot, but some, but we should be ready within the next, I think, 16 to 90 days to, I don't know what the next grant cycle is, but we should be ready within the next 16 to 90 days to be able to say, "This is the road we need to take, and let's explore it further."
Okay, I just, I'd like to reiterate, that is the recommendation that Ray Jack has given us, that we decline the grant at this time and investigate further the pay-as-you-throw program, whether it be bags, whether it be bins, and how and compare to the present disposal system with natural resources.
I wanted to make one other comment, and I think Mr. Quentin Aliani hit on it very good tonight. And that comment is the fact that very often, when we do fees in this community, we never extrapolate what the town uses, given illustration with water, wastewater, and now we're on trash. We're asking folks who are paying user fees to pay for the entire system, but the taxpayers as a whole should pay what government uses, meaning they should pay for the town's services as in water, wastewater, as well as trash pickup. So if we ever go to this, we need to extrapolate what the tonnage is. So I'd just like to say to the folks in the Department of Public Works, that's something that I'll be asking you to do as we move down the bike, because I don't think it's fair to ask users to supplement twice. They're already paying a tax rate, to come back and pay a fee to help government do something. So that's an unfair user fee on those folks. Brett?
It's funny you mention that, because I have something new to add now. A few years ago, when we were discussing fees, I had proposed, and it was declined by the board at the time, but hopefully the board will consider it again this year when we set fees, is that all town trucks that take trash to the dump, the town transfer station, that it go to the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station directly. And the reason why is twofold. One, is there's a scale there, so we would know exactly how much trash is coming from the town trucks that the towns, that the town collects, whether it be at the beaches or town buildings or whatnot. And two, is that by taking it directly to the Upper Cape Transfer Station, we're avoiding having to pay a contractor to transport the trash from the dump to the transfer station. It seemed to me to be common sense, but at the time, the board didn't like the idea. But hopefully, it'll be considered this year.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on not accepting the pay-as-you-throw grant? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of not accepting, you'd say aye.
Standing.
Aye. This is this particular. Anyone opposed? Aye's having. Thank you very much, folks. We appreciate your input. Next up is, and we'll let the folks clear out of the room, is to authorize and vote to project amend agreement, the Cedar Lake ARR A project.
You have something to say? You have something to say?
Please get out the door, out the door!
You fuck my wife, I'll take your hand off!
Out the door! No! Please, go!
Ray, Ray, babe!
Yes?
Go!
Come down, Ray. Please come down, okay, Ray? Please.
I know you are. Just wait a second, we can talk. Please.
I don't want anything to happen to you, Ray, okay? Maybe you're, you're going to be out of the scale, okay, Val?
Are you ready, Mr. Quentin?
Can you turn another one?
Yes, sure. You can do this one. Just maybe, just hit this one.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chuck Martinson, Acting Director of the Department of Natural Resources, thank you for having us this evening. We will be as brief as we can. We're before you this evening, tonight, on a project amendment agreement for the Cedar Lake American Recoveries and Reinvestment Act project. And I thought I would just do briefly, for three or four minutes here, just review the project and the need for the project, if I could. Just to start off, obviously, herring are very important animals, fish, as well, our eels, to our ecosystem, both locally and regionally. Herring are the basis for the food web for a number of animals, including amphibians and small fish in your freshwater systems, to the largest marine mammals in the ocean, and pretty much everything in between. Just to go through the herring run that we, present conditions that we have right now at Bay Road, right here, you can see this right here, essentially, this is a bunch of rubble. And every year, we patch this rubble back together to make a herring run out of this. This, this herring run was, from what we've gathered from our research, was constructed in the 1930s as part of the Works Progress Administration. What I'm getting at by giving you that date is that these projects only happen about once a century. To have something along these lines funded, this is a relatively large project, and actually is, and is at the top of our list priority-wise for herring runs. It was initially placed on the top of our list by Paul Montague. This project was followed through by Mark Patton for the application for the funding, and I have followed with seeing this through to the end, hopefully. So another shot of the herring run again, it just shows the downhill side, where it's falling apart. This is the head wall where the herring travel through. This is part of the way up the elevation. Herring start down in the ocean, they work their way up. This is halfway through the elevation, and I'm going to show you another photo in a few minutes. They gain elevation as they go through the pipe, which is actually problematic.
Excuse me for a minute. Could someone please ask those folks in the hall to be quiet, please? Sorry for the disruption. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. This is a very good picture to show you the present conditions of the run. As you can see, the edges of the pipe are all rusting out. At this point, this pipe is about ready to collapse. And as I mentioned before, there's elevation gained as the fish climb up this pipe. Now, this pipe here is only about 18 inches wide, so on a good day, I can't get into it. We need to stick devices up there to clear that out as debris works its way down the river system. Debris gets hung up in these individual fishways, keyways. One of the interesting facts or kind of design features of the new system is that all of the elevation is going to be gained prior to the water leaving the pipe. So if there are obstructions, they will be able to be cleared to the ocean side of the pipe, and we will not need to spend time working this pipe to clear it for the fish passage each year. This is a top-down photo, it shows just basically the fencing on top following. This is another interesting photo here. You see the sand on your side right here. This is sand which is removed pretty much a few times a year by our staff. The road up on top washes down and into the herring run throughout various rainstorms, which causes significant runoff of sand into the area of Rans Canal. And this photo right here, I don't know if you can see this, but this is all sand that's working its way down into Rans Canal, which actually brings on another interesting point here, and that's the fact that as the sand continues, we're going to be, need to look at things such as dredging of Rans Canal. This is essentially filling in Rans Canal. I guess where I'm kind of going with things before I hand this over to Peter is, you know, work and investment now is going to save us long-term costs on this project in the next 40 to 50 years. If we can address the road runoff, which this project does, if we can address the pipe under the roadway, if we can address the annual maintenance that is significant right now, we will alleviate ourselves of those liabilities for, you know, hopefully the next 40 or 50 years. So I believe it is truly a great investment for the town. I'm going to, at this point, turn this over to Peter McConity, who's going to give some brief information on both... brief information on both the design of the run and some of the financial information as well. Also here with Abigail Franklin from the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and Abigail's right here. If you guys have any questions for her, she'll be able to answer them as well.
Can I ask him a question? In Rans Canal, is that the upper part of Rans Canal?
Correct.
And that would be sort of the south side and the north side, or east or west, or whatever it is?
Rans Canal, if you're familiar with it, it goes up, and it kind of rabbit ears. And this would be the left-hand side.
The left-hand side.
So it would be the north-west side.
West-side.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter McConity, Town Engineer. As Chuck had, Mr. Martinson had gone through all the photos of the present conditions, we're looking at a solution for this project. And since 2010, what we've been, what's the engineering department, Public Works, has been working on is the solution to this. This is a 100% design project. It's ready for, it's shovel-ready, ready for construction. The work was completely performed in-house by Public Works. The survey was completed, the design was completed. It's hard to see for the background, with the background of this, of the presentation. There's different color lines within the, all within the boundaries of that canal. And what they all represent are different restrictions in different areas. So between the Conservation Commission, it's the riverfront area, it's the low-water area, it's private property owners, it's the 100-foot buffer zone. There was approximately five to six different restricted areas that we're within with design. And we were able to design the whole fish ladder 100% with the NRCS, with the Department of Natural Resources, and also with a subconsultant that the NRCS had hired to design the fish ladder. So the plans are shovel-ready, they're 100% construction, we're ready to go out to bid on the project. 100% storm approved, already been through the Conservation Commission, we already received our notice intent. Once again, this whole process has already been through the engineering department, it was all done in-house, ready to go. Real quickly, I just wanted to go through this last slide. This is basically the funding of the project since 2010. In 2010, this project was set up between the NRCS and between our former director of natural resources. And when the project was set up, they came to the town, as Mr. Martinson has says, this has been our number-one top priority project for many years. So they came to the town, they asked us to do a cost estimate for it, a cost out of it, of what services would be needed and what kind of match that the town could make. What we had done is the town put together, or actually, our engineering department put together a full cost estimate in the project. The NRCS subconsulted the fish ladder portion of it, so it drove the price up a little further as a subconsulted out. The total engineering cost estimate for the project is $606,835. The grant ineligible items, what that means is there was water services underneath the roadway, there's gas services underneath the roadway, some of the aprons for the abuttes up there have to be rebuilt, some berms in the street have to be rebuilt. It's not, the drainage on the edge of the, on the sides of the roadway, the grass whale and some of the stone, that is considered not to be part of the design of the fish ladder, it's part of the roadway reconstruction portion of it. So there's different areas working with the design of the project. But that $62,000 is considered ineligible item, so that's a town responsibility, a town cost. The NRCS grant eligible items is $544,000. That's the eligible funds that are available through the NRCS. The NRCS 75% share for that is $408,000. And the town grant share of that is $136,000. In 2010, when the project started, there's a 25% match that the town has to share with the cost of the construction. 7% out of that 25% is allowed for technical services, is allowed for construction period services. Over the past two years, we were able to put together amendments to the contract to bring it up from, to bring it up from this 7%, we were able to work with the NRCS, and they were very helpful to let us bring that up to 17.45%. So there's considerable increase. It went in 2010 from us to be able to do a match of $38,000 to do a match of $94,000. It's a $38,000 plus this $56,000 equals the $94,000. So that was a considerable increase for us to be able to do as a match with our services. The town contract responsibility, the grant eligible items is the $62,000, that's the ineligible items. The grant share is the 136, that's the town share, so it's a subtotal of $198,000. To this date, the engineering department has already been able, we've done the full design, we've done the full permitting, we've done all the easements, we've had all the easements recorded, we've worked with the Department of Natural Resources, has worked with all the abuttes up there, we've done all that work possible, so we're already $30,000 to $35,000 in grant reimbursements towards the 25%. And as we move forward, going into construction, we'll be looking at performing construction administration, construction period services, we'll be looking at clerk of the works, we'll be looking at replantings out there for Conservation Commission. So we're looking at be able to even further reduce the cost. So the bottom line here is that total $103,628. If at the end of the project, the town of Falmouth, the NRCS, the natural resources, everything worked together 100%, and we were able to write off 100% of all the end-kind services that we had done, the project could cost $103,000. What we're asking for at a town meeting, I just wanted to bring this up because this is a town meeting article, what we're going to be asking for as a town meeting article is $175,000. I would rather be up on top, have the whole project 100% completed, and be able to give back portions of the funds, so that wouldn't restrict us at the end of the project. So basically, in summary, what we are getting is a project that's worth $606,835. We're getting it for $103,000. And to this point, the town has spent $0 on the design and on the permitting. So we're in a good position at this point. I just wanted to go through these finances of the project, where we are and where we're going.
Doug?
Can you explain, Mr. Chairman, maybe Mr. Sosso can explain, again, the allowance, how we, this is work that's been done, we are paying for it somehow. It's not, I mean, we don't get that $30,000.
Correct.
No one pays for it. We are paying it, just what pocket are we paying out of it? It's just not out of this pocket we're paying. But when work is done by the DPW, Natural Resources, is it being done by town employees?
Correct.
As part of their job? They're not doing something else at that time? I mean, I'm just a little bit confused as to how that's a free gift.
The $0 is $0, hard cash out of the pocket, $0. That we would have to go and have this project designed by an outside consulting firm, or we'd have to have the construction portions of the contract done by an outside consulting firm or an outside. One of the restrictions that the Conservation Commission asks for this project is to have an environmental monitor on the project. So that's something.
I don't mean to be difficult, but if the Natural Resources or our town engineer didn't do this.
Correct.
Would they just not be doing anything at that time?
This is one of our projects that is on our list of projects. The engineering department is not looking for more work. We have more work than we can handle right now. This is one of our projects that was on that, that was on this.
Can I just interject, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Selectman Jones, just, your point's well made. This is what an economist would call an opportunity cost. In other words, you're quite correct. Time and energy, and staff time and resources are being spent on this, and they're not being spent on something alternatively, because this is a priority, as Town Engineer McConity has said. So this has been selected and determined and designated since 2010, and perhaps a little bit before, when this was, contract was entered into initially, to be a priority for the town and is seen as a significant matter to achieve. So internal resources have been set aside and have not been expended in other areas as a result. Your point's well made. Peter McConity's suggestion is that we've not spent additional cash on outside funding beyond that, and so...
But the plus side is we then get to use that as part of our...
As a match.
To earn the money from...
Quite correct.
Exactly.
Quite correct. And to Peter's credit and Chuck's, they've been working diligently with NRCS to increase the amount of that recognized and allowable percentage to the town's advantage over the years, even as changes have occurred, including the one that is before the board tonight for your consideration. So it's an excellent point. Appreciate you raising it.
Of course, the beauty of this project is we get to leverage $103,000 worth of in-kind, or actually, town resource money, that we get a five-for-one match. So we get $600,000 back for a $100,000 investment.
I just have a question on the ARRA funds. Back in 2010, I think there was a $20 million grant that the APCC Association to preserve Cape Cod received from the feds, and I thought that this project was part of phase one of that $20 million. Is that the case or not? What is this, what is the actual source of the ARRA funds? I mean, how were they obtained? What agency actually, was it your group that got the ARRA funds? Or?
Right ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Abigail Franklin, I work for the Cape Cod Conservation District. We're closely aligned, we work in partnership with the federal Natural Resources Conservation Service. There is $6.5 million that was awarded to the Cape through the Natural Resources Conservation Service for work on fish ladder projects, stormwater improvement projects, and salt marsh projects. APCC was very closely involved with all of that, so they're actually doing a lot of outreach about the project. But the money did come, so it's from Congress, through federal Natural Resources Conservation Service, and then to, NRCS is working individually with the 15 Cape Cod towns for projects there.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions from the board?
No.
Do I have any additional comments? Anybody? George?
As a, George Hampson, North Falmouth, as a member of the Coastal Ponds Management Committee, I've been working with the county on this. And it's very disheartening when we had two projects brought before from Falmouth, and right now, I hate to lose the best one. And the other towns are spending money, and it's very disheartening. Also want to bring a point up right now. This is a good herring run, and it can be made very good. In one time, for 10 minutes, I counted 53 herring that made it up over the rocks. So that was, that was something. Last year, this one, I struck out like the Red Sox. I didn't get anything, but other people did. So it's a good herring run.
I did, do want to ask one question before we entertain a motion, and that question is, Mr. McConity said that he's been looking for $175,000 at town meeting. I wanted to make sure that we were going to have those type of funds available?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is the amount that's going to be earmarked and brought forward at town meeting, subject to their approval, which would be, as he's indicated, the absolute ceiling amount that we would anticipate. But it will be set aside for that purpose, with town meeting approval.
Great. And the only other thing is, that I wanted to say is, I grew up over in that side of town, and I remember as a kid, that herring run was so packed, you could virtually walk across it, there was that many fish in it. Now, the first time I saw that, I just could not believe there were that many fish in one spot. And of course, over the years, it has surely dwindled, but we hope to bring back that population. So I'd look to entertain a motion?
Someone here?
For a...
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye's having. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good effort.
By the way, I want to congratulate you on your certification. I know I had, in the past, had concern. I just really want to publicly say, I know you worked hard for it, and I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
And it's so nice to go by today. Verizon's got the poles out, they're paving Old Barnstable, it looks great.
Old Barnstable Road is paved. They have, that was a long time coming. I do want to apologize myself to the residents of Old Barnstable Road. That was a long time coming.
But that was a Verizon issue, right? Waiting for the poles, so...
It was, yeah. What it is, it's a utility, it's a utility. It's between Verizon and N-Star and Comcast. It's, N-Star owns the pole.
Yeah.
And, but it was Verizon that they have the underground fiber optics, so it took the extra time.
Anyway, congratulations, and thank you for Old Barnstable.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, next up is authorize and vote contract award recommendation, wastewater services. Who's going to present this?
Mr. Jack.
Mr. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town had recently put out a request for engineering services, and it was a fairly large contract. It was expected to be about $500,000, and we received a number of respondents. So there was a technical review team established, which consisted of myself, Virginia Valiella, and Peter Boyer. We conducted the technical reviews, and those were done individually and collectively. We came to a unanimous agreement that there were three firms that received ratings of highly advantageous, as opposed to the others, and we selected those for additional interviews, not presentations. So those presentations were held within the last week, and as a result of those presentations, we also unanimously came to the conclusion that the most advantageous proposal just happened to be the lowest-price proposal as well. That would have been GHD in the amount of $320,000. The total cost of the proposals overall ranged from a high of $695,000 to a low of $320,000. So the recommendation here would be for GHD in the amount of $320,000 plus $130,000, not as part of the original contract amount, but basically recognizing with the board that these would be for additional tasks that were outlined within the RFP for reviewing other components of other RFPs. So there are additional items under consideration that were already identified. Now we know what those costs would be in order to entertain those, so it's just asking that you're accepting that at this time as well.
Any questions from the board?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the contract award recommendation for wastewater surfaces awarded to GHD in the amount of $320,000. Enhanced task allowances of $130,000 as outlined in the cost proposals. Is that the proper motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Ray.
Mr. Jack. Careful out there. Okay. Next up is vote selectmen's liaison policy and liaison assignments. We've been working on this for a few weeks. I know Mr. Putnam had gotten back to the board with a draft that we would hope would be final, but I'm going to open it up to comments from the board before we try to move forward with voting on the liaison policy first.
I've been struggling with Section 2C on this policy, and I couldn't really kind of get my mind wrapped around it, because it, to me, it was giving certain powers to an individual member of the board, that actually, there's no basis for having that kind of individual, I call it a power, because that's what it really is. And that is to make a recommendation to the full board on appointments. And I was never comfortable with that. I didn't think that it was appropriate for any individual member of the board to come before the board and make a recommendation on an appointment to a board that the rest of the board actually was not a liaison to, if you know what I mean. So, and I just could, it just didn't feel good at all. It didn't seem like the right thing to do. It didn't, and I tried to put myself in the position of an applicant. If I was applying to be on a particular board, and I was actually making my application to the full board, but yet one selectman was going to be able to say to the board, "I recommend this person," whomever, however, if it's only one applicant, or even if it's three applicants... whomever, however, if it's only one applicant, or even if it's three applicants. So anyway, I finally came to the conclusion today, after rereading it again and again, that this section really belongs in the policy on appointments. Because that's what it is. It refers to the appointments of the board. Because the board makes appointments. And as we all know, not one of us has any power individually. Our only power is as we sit here as a board. Now, it may seem like, well, I'm not going to go into what it may seem like. But I think it has, I think it has pitfalls. I think an individual selectman taking on that kind of responsibility with any power to really do that, and a policy does not confer any power on anybody. I just thought that it didn't belong in a policy on how we, how we agree to be liaison to committees. This really is much more related to our appointment policy and how we make appointments to the board. So I would like to see it not be included in this, and that when we review our policy on appointments, we may take it up at that time. But it really concerns me that the policy is giving an individual member of the board a certain power to make recommendations to the full board. And I think there are pitfalls in that. I think there are, if I were an applicant, I would not be comfortable with that. And I, I think there's room in there to go down a dark hole that I don't think any of us would want to go down. That's
So what is your suggestion?
My suggestion is that we remove C from the policy. And that we, and if we want to, in the very near future, bring it up again as perhaps a part of our discussion on the appointment policy. Because I think it far more relates to appointments than it does to liaison. Because it's conferring a responsibility to the liaison that I just think is not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I can understand Ms. Flynn's concern about that. But on the other hand, I do appreciate the intent of saying the liaison might have some insight as to who would be appropriate addition to the board. And maybe she's right, it'd be a better place in the appointment policy as opposed to this policy. But I could see it being quite relevant that we, the liaison would be the person who's seen how that board works and might have some ideas as to whether the new person applying would be suitable or not. So I can see sort of the intent here, but I could also understand why maybe taking it out of here would make a lot of sense, and reconsidering it in the appointment policy.
If I may, but I think the appointments to boards and committees are the board's appointments. And it's, each board member has its own responsibility to read, to listen to the applicant, to interview the applicant, to know, perhaps if you're, we're not sure what kind of, what kind of experience, not person, we're not looking at the person, really. We're looking at their experiences, their willingness. Because remember, these are citizens. These are volunteers. These are people that are coming and offering their time to help the town. This isn't like rocket science. I mean, this isn't like an interview for employment. It's people who are willing to give up their time because they believe that they have some knowledge and experience in their background that might be helpful to that. But I see that as the board doing its due diligence and its homework. And maybe, hopefully, we have had occasions when the chairman of the boards have come and said, we strongly support this particular individual for our board or committee. And the person who's been coming to our meetings and all this and that. And we have always been very agreeable to hear recommendations from the chairman. But as a board, I, I just think that we need to function as a board in appointing and not asking individual members of the board to take on responsibilities that could lead them down a path they may not want to go.
Well, I don't want to vary the, this agenda item off to a different policy. And that would be another discussion altogether, our, our appointments area. I mean, I don't like the good old boy network when everybody on a committee recommends that we put this person on, because then it just means that they want to make sure that they rallied the horses. So that's another issue totally. Let's deal with this, and then maybe we could reopen. Or do we actually have an appointment policy on the
We do.
So maybe we need to reopen that, to look at that in regard to recommendations. But you want to respond to
Yeah, I can, I got a few comments. And I'm going to disagree with Ms. Flynn. She said it's not an interview for employment, but in fact, it is. And I think that's one of the issues that we've had, certainly in recent memory, is that, you know, we have had conflicts within some of the committees. And some of them have been very public. And of course, we know, we know of those situations. I think we really have to make it very clear in this process that there is, these folks aren't being paid, but in many cases, they're being conferred with regulatory authority. They're being conferred with powers as a committee that has led the town into court cases. And whether it's as, ironically, whether it's as a committee and a decision that they make are between members of the committee. So this is a very serious issue. And one of the reasons why this is in here was simply because it was thought that the liaisons would be the natural individual to take that responsibility. I don't necessarily believe that it confers power. This could perhaps be just as equally appropriate to put in the appointment policy, but I think there has to be something there. I know other towns do make assignments and say that a certain member of the board is going to check references. Wareham has a policy, something similar to this. And it's not uncommon for this board or any board commission or committee to subdivide itself and to assign tasks to either subcommittees or individual members of the boards. So this is not necessarily unusual. And as far as dark holes go, there's, I think there's always that potential. And it's something we have to be ever mindful of. I think, one of the things we have to be mindful of here is that in the past, I don't think enough attention has been paid to vetting and to making sure that the individuals who we appoint are actually suited to be on a committee, are actually being appropriately appointed, or whether, you know, as Mr. Murphy suggests, that maybe enough of the, the members of the committee believe somebody should be there. But it doesn't necessarily contribute to the diversity or the, to the cross-section that we expect to see from, you know, members of the community. You know, one way or the other, I think we need this, whether it's in the appointment policy or in the liaison policy. That may be for a broader discussion or another time.
Well, and, and I will tend to agree that I think, you know, if I'm a liaison, I may or I may not give an opinion upon somebody. And I may or may not do that individually versus at a public meeting as well. But I guess we want to put this stuff in writing, whether it be here or in the, in the appointment powers. You know, maybe we can open that back up again.
Well, we're also assuming that every member of the board is going to be extremely diligent and attend the meetings, and be very much aware of what the needs of these, of these boards and committees are, in terms of the types of individuals, or the backgrounds, or whatever. We are, I, I wouldn't also want to see it as a deterrent to people who are willing to serve, but maybe they might find this a bit onerous, or maybe just a little bit too much for them in terms of applying. And another, well, I just think it's, like I say, I think it's opening a door that we don't want to go down. I think it could cause problems for us by having a selectman make a recom, I would not be comfortable at all, myself, if I were a liaison to a committee, and maybe I've been to two meetings before the appointment came up, and make a recommendation to the board. That's a pretty important task. Maybe I'm making too much of it, but maybe it's because I've been here too long. Or a long time, rather. Not too long, but a long time. And I just, I, I, I just think that it's, it's too restrictive, and it puts too much responsibility on the part of one selectman, when I believe that appointments are the responsibility of everybody. And each of us should, should know exactly what we're doing. I'm not going to say anymore, because I'm getting deeper down the road than I plan to go.
Can I make a comment that, when I look at references, I look at, when they say that, I'm looking at the reference not of, I'm going to call and ask them, does this person know anything about this particular thing? I'm looking at the reference as a character reference. Could this person, does this person have good character? Would I want this person to represent the town of Falmouth on that community, on that committee? That's really what I'm looking for in a reference. I mean, you know, we all have personality flaws. He without sin cast the first stone. I can tell you that, you know, we all have those things. And I surely am the first one to say that. But what is your basic character? And I think that's what we're looking for when I call about a reference. I'm not looking to find out whether you're a scientist. I mean, I know that we, you know, in what you've studied, I mean, when I, when they're writing down some of these studies that they do, you know, how am I going to be a good judge of character on every individual committee, not character, but a judge of whether they're, they're intelligent enough? I think if we're finding somebody who has basic common sense and, and, you know, can bring open-mindedness and good character, that's the only thing I'm looking for. But I, I agree that that's or not our discussion. The discussion tonight is whether it's in the liaison policy or the appointing policy. Yes?
Or whether it's even appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to go along with the idea of removing this from the liaison policy. I think we should then bring the appointment policy back for discussion and try to insert it into there if Ms. Flynn believes more
No, no, wait a minute. No, you can vote the policy without it. But the other thing is, maybe when you see it in the context of the appointment policy, it might look a little bit different than it looks embedded in a liaison policy.
And I'm fine with taking it out of here. But I think if we're going to do that, let's schedule and bring back the appointment policy and see where we can insert it into that.
I'm okay with that.
I'd be happy to.
I can't focus. I'm not in there.
One question about the appointment policy. We don't, it's not like we have 12 people applying for two appointments, that we're really narrowing it down. If we do have only two people applying for two positions, do we appoint them automatically? Or?
Maybe we need to discuss that in the appointment policy. I mean, you know, there could be an abstention as a vote. I mean, I don't know how you turn away a volunteer. That's where I've really had, had a problem doing that.
See, that's where I'm coming from, too. I don't want to turn people off either and say, oh, if I'm going to have to go through this, and then I have to be approved by you or you, and then I have to wait and see if I'm going to get approved by the full board. I'd say, you know what? I'll go volunteer. I'll go work at the service center or something.
When you get your pack at Thursday or Friday, like I, I look through it. I've called references before. And a lot of times, though, because a lot of people you know from servant, and so a lot of people will get up here, and you know what questions to ask. A lot, some people up here will show their true character. And, but that's what sometimes I've made the decision, asking the questions I want and listening to your questions, and then I know who the right person is. So I'm split on whether it should be here or in the appointment policy.
But I would love to have us move on the liaison policy. So I'd move that we remove this for now, so we can improve the policy and move on the assignments, and as soon as possible, bring it back to the appointment policy.
So are you making a motion to approve this policy with striking C in Section 2?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Raise the Lord. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Long as there's a breath left in somebody.
Exactly right. Okay. The next is the liaisons' assignments. Now, again, in the, in the effort of sharing some of the responsibility of the chair, the vice chair had put together these assignments. Now, if you want to discuss them, that's fine. I know that we all can't get everything we want.
I did. Can I say I did?
But again, next year is a different year. And you know what? I like the idea, I've got to tell you that the way you did the assignments provided for the chairman not to have any other assignment except the ones dictated by the policy. So therefore, it's almost required that, that we move those assignments around every year. Because the chair is not going to be the chair ongoing, so there'd have to be some changes. Okay? So I like that idea. I originally saw it, I didn't get it, but then I wasn't going to complain. But then I realized that I did have to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so, for the board's edification, I know I have to mention it to a few folks. And first of all, I'll thank Ms. Flynn, because she and I had no preferences. She expressed no preference for her assignments. And so it essentially came down to Mr. Bragg and Mr. Jones. And the two of them chose almost completely different lists of preferences, except for one conflict. And Mr. Bragg won that one, being the more senior of the two. And then the rest was just
Are you trying to say those two people are different, Kelly?
But it was, it was a relatively easy task. And I thank Ms. Flynn for her flexibility and, and the board, everyone, it just worked very nicely, so.
That's great.
See? Good things do happen.
See that? Nothing wrong with that. So I don't think we have to vote on the liaison assignments. I think that
No one's objecting.
We've got some consensus, so we'll just move forward.
I also do think a bunch of the assignments make a lot of sense with the way you grouped them.
Yes, that's true.
Your assignments of Coastal Ponds
Like a hybrid services person now.
Water protection, there are a whole bunch that
And actually, to Mr. Jones's point, he had made some suggestions in his email about grouping them. And I took advantage of, of those suggestions and what was left after assigning their, giving them their assignments. I tried to categorize them, and I handed them to Ms. Flynn and I accordingly.
So keep in mind, this doesn't eliminate any other members of the board to, to go to any one of these particular boards or committee meetings. I encourage folks to drop in. I think it's important that we show, first of all, that we care, we have an interest, and we give us a little insight on how they're interacting. Okay. Move on. We got the, approve the minutes of September the 17th.
Well, I wasn't here, but I, in the first paragraph, it's Catherine with a C, Catherine Bumpus. C-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E. I just went for the language since I wasn't here. Other than that, all right.
Does anyone else have any corrections?
A lot of minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval minutes with the, change as recommended.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Abstain?
Abstain.
One abstain. Okay. Next up is town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the past week, just a little update, I attended the finance committee's, a regular meeting this past Tuesday evening. They are beginning their process of review and discussion of all financial-related articles for the upcoming November town meeting. I look forward to working closely with them in this important process. And they have posted meetings, of course, again this week for both tomorrow night, Tuesday, and Wednesday night as well. I was also pleased to attend the latest meeting of the wind turbine options process group this past Wednesday evening as an observer. And the group continues to make progress in their ongoing discussions and deliberations. And they also will begin, pardon me, will be meeting again this week. On Thursday, I attended a meeting of the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association, which included a workshop presentation on leadership and a discussion on professional ethics. And of course, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper attended that session as well. Also wanted to advise the board that the Cape Cod Commission will be holding a hearing on the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan on Thursday, October 6th, pardon me, Thursday, October 4th, at 6:00 PM at the library. And again, that's a formal hearing and part of that public comment process, which we have discussed recently, and for which the board recently granted a, an extension as requested by the reviewing agencies. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make the, the board aware that, just as a scheduling issue, twice a year, by requirements of the charter, we meet with the planning board. And one of those meetings is in fact on the planning board night. So on the 23rd of October, we do have a scheduled planning board meeting. So we'll have two meetings that week, one on the 22nd, one on the 23rd with the planning board. That will be, quote unquote, an away game. Okay? Individual selectmen reports.
Well, I have a couple of, on October the 3rd Well, I have a couple of, on October the 3rd, at 5:30, the Mass Selectments Association is meeting at the Barnstable Senior Center, beginning at 5:30. They have a late dinner. And you do have to register if you want to attend. And October 17th, at the Barnstable High School, at 6:00 PM, the Attorney General's Office is holding an open meeting law instructional program, coming down here to the Cape since they have a few people who they believe think need a little update on the open meeting law.
A little.
So that also requires a registration, which you can do online.
Great. I'd give a couple of reports, if I can, to the board. I had the opportunity, I don't want to preempt, Mr. Bragg.
Go ahead.
To attend the Senior Center Open House, which was this past Thursday evening. It was, well, had a nice turnout. And you can see that the, the folks who work there, as well as the folks who participate, and those folks who support them are genuinely interested and genuinely concerned and want to get more folks involved. I also had the opportunity to kick off the Wounded Warrior Bike Ride on, on Friday morning at 9:00, 9:00 AM. The, as we know, the Wounded Warrior Group came to the town, and they came to three locations on the Cape. They did a ride down the bike path to Woods Hole, then came back. I've got to tell you that if you saw the folks that were riding on those bikes, you would really believe and, and understand that the commitment and the sacrifice that some folks have made to keep this flag and freedom alive in this country for each and every one of us is surely heartwarming. And in the midst of most of these folks who are, who in fact had been wounded and had had some form of a handicap because of those wounds, I hadn't seen a group so excited and so pumped up to do this ride. I do know that I would like to thank, from, and speaking of the organizer there, Karen Carson, the principal at North Falmouth School, had taken a large group from North Falmouth School to the bike path near the end of their ride. And the wounded warriors were so excited to see that many children, that many, many people involved and welcoming them. And specifically, keep in mind, these, these folks don't always ride bikes. It's not like, it's the same team that travels the country. They recruit additional wounded warriors in every location they go to. So many of these guys, from the night before, were still very sore because the day before it was the first time they had ridden 20 miles in any form or fashion. So that was heartwarming. The other thing is, I want to report that by chance, I happened to stumble on the Zuma Road Race on Saturday morning when I left my home. And unfortunately, they did have a road closing for about 20 minutes, which was not anticipated and was not really explained. I happened to be there because I'm somewhere near where I live, and I couldn't, couldn't go that way. So we did get a couple of complaints in the town manager's office this morning in regard to that. If we do, everything else went smoothly. The beach department was happy. Everyone else seemed to be happy. But we would need to reiterate that there would be no road closings because there were some complaints, and we want to look at that moving forward. Besides that, everything went fine.
I have a couple more things. I did the Wounded Warrior, too, at Chappaquay Road. That was one of the stops, you know, the place where people gathered. And that actually, as it turned out, the, the group that was ahead of, at the head of the group, there was a gap. So they stayed there for about 10 minutes. So I had Dixie with me, the dog. And, I mean, she just had a great time, and they had a great time with her. So I was there for like an hour, all while they were there. Which, I agree with you, it was really great. The other thing, the Barnstable, the Barnstable County Selectments Association met. I wasn't here last week. So this was a week ago, Friday on the 14th. And Speaker of the House, DeLeo, was the guest speaker. And he had a whole lot to say. And he had, of course, he loves, he talks about Falmouth all the time because his son-in-law has a home here now. And so he spends a lot of time in Falmouth. So he's learning a lot about us, since we don't even know he's around sometime. But anyway, he did mention, because it came up from most everyone in the group, about the, the vacation rentals, the timeshare. And he said that, of course, nothing happened, as we know, in the last legislative session. But they are going to attempt to deal with it this time. But instead of trying to make it a local option, where each town has to file their home rule petitions to make it happen, he's working with the, with the committees to see if they can't just simply pass it as one of them, like the municipal relief things. It's there. If you want to use it, then your town meeting would have to vote it. But you won't have to file a home rule petition again to, so it'll be a little bit easier to, to amend. And there were a few other things. We talked about wastewater, particularly about funding and how difficult it is for the communities to try to do that. And he said that we're going to try to look at that in some way. There were some other things, too, that I wrote down, that they're really looking and concentrating more on the cities and towns to see how the state can be more supportive to cities and towns. And also, the, the funding and the budget, I guess, for this past year was, was at least the same, not much better, but the same. And they're looking to do more of that in the, in the next fiscal year as well. So that's...
Anybody else, Doug?
The wind turbine optional meeting I was at, they did set or discuss a December 1st goal for wrapping up and being able to present some information to us, so that then we can make a decision based on that. They didn't, they don't vote on anything, so they just discussed that that's kind of where they're looking for right now, just to give you all a heads up that that may be what we can expect.
Yeah, it was...
That's great.
Just quickly, on the same night we went to, you know, we fit in good there, didn't we?
We did.
You know. I had attended the zoning board of appeals.
I was asking about the aides, and they told me it's just a couple more years before I could actually go there officially and vote for.
I know. Pick up your table. But that...
Where'd you go?
The Senior Center.
Oh, the Senior Center.
Jill Bishop has done wonders over there.
Yeah, she really has.
You know, really taken that on. But the same night, I attended the zoning board of appeals. And at the risk of now that I'm a liaison, it's, you know, this list I have of things I've asked about, but one of them came out of the meeting we had with them about their enforcement assistance, with the order of conditions that they've setting not being, you know, looked at by anyone when the people are abiding by. And also, they had issues that night with their book again. So I'm hoping, I know Julian, once, when I talked about it back in February, said, "Hopefully, that's a summer project," but with the book being reorganized and all put together. So I'm hoping that's something we can, in the next couple of weeks, I'll be discussing a few issues. But I'm hoping that's one of the things we could, you know, look at.
Glad to see you brought your lint brush tonight.
Yeah, I did. Because there was cat hair on the chair.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, everybody.
I'm a citizen.
If you're a visitor, this is where surf and sun meet for fun. If you're a resident, this is where you'll find the businesses and the resources necessary to fill all of your needs. If you're a businessperson, this can be your home. Join with other men and women who work together to make this a sustainable economy year-round. Welcome to Falmouth Cape Cod.